Good morning. I want to welcome all of you to the May 24, 2022 Meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. And I want to thank all who are in chambers this morning for joining us and those that are joining us via the broadcast. And with that, then I'll go and turn to our clerk, Flo Evans, to call and roll to establish a quorum. We'll do the Pledge of Allegiance, make some announcements, and get right into the agenda. So Flo, good morning.
Good morning. Supervisors Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Desmond.
Frost.
Here.
Natoli.
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is cable cast live on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, May 27 at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. In compliance with directives of the county, state, and Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, the meeting will be livestreamed and open to public attendance pursuant to health and safety guidelines. The practice of social distancing and wearing of face coverings, mask, or shield is recommended for the health and safety of all persons participating in person during the meeting, although it is not required. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Members of the public will be given three minutes to make a comment and are limited to making one public comment per Agenda item or off-Agenda matter. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each Agenda item or call for off-Agenda matters, and when the chairperson calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. To make a public comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific Agenda item or off-Agenda matter. Please refer to the Agenda or watch the meeting to follow along to determine when is the best time to call, to be placed in queue, or to make your comment. Clerk staff will transfer calls into the meeting accordingly. Each Agenda item will remain open until the public comment period is closed for that specific item. You may be on hold for up to an extended period of time, and your patience is appreciated. You may send written comments to email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Your comments will be routed to the Board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see the clerk staff for assistance or contact us at 916-874-5451 or by email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of meeting procedures.
Great, thank you. Flo, would you mind leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, with that, then, we're going to go to our off-agenda. We have some folks in chambers to address the board. Do we have any on the line as well, off-agenda?
Yeah, it looks like we have one off-agenda comment.
Okay, good. We'll go to the off-agenda comments first, and then we'll come back to our regular agenda. We do have an addendum agenda. We have some items that we're going to take up here in a few moments. So, all right, with that, then, we have, first, we have Ryan Harris, followed by Seth Alexander, followed by Ted Samara. So, Mr. Harris, good morning.
All right, so, good morning.
Good morning.
It's becoming clear every meeting that I care more about Sacramento and its citizens than the five of you. I'm exhausted, but I can't let you see it. And Edwards and their henchmen have made me fear for my life. I just want to let people know with regards to my situation that I'm still at these meetings, then the Board of Supervisors are still not upholding their job duties to protect the people of this community. I also want to let the people know that if I'm missing with no closure, then it's because you guys have killed me. I say that because my life has been threatened, and you promoted and gave more power to the individual who lied and jeopardized my life, Ethan Die. I provide you all examples of how Ethan Die has lied. Members of the community have provided you examples of how Ethan Die has lied. Even doctors have provided you with proof that Ethan Die has lied, and you continue to ignore my pleas for help and protection from his abuse of power. So again, I ask Mayor Steinberg, Gavin Newsom, Governor Gavin Newsom, what's up? Talk to me, let me know. The two of you are really great at getting out there and taking pictures with the African-American community, but what are you truly doing to stop the systemic racism that's taking place within Sacramento County? Since the last time I was here, I had a county investigation. Are you aware that the program manager, Carmel Sidney, lied while under oath? Richard Desmond, you are a man of the law. You possess your juris doctrine. What does the law say about lying while under oath? It is a federal crime, right? In fact, how do you all feel about perjury? Mayor Steinberg, is this how you run your city? Governor Newsom, is this the new blueprint for California? Racism, employees lying under oath, directors partaking in defamation, retaliation, harassment, and discrimination? A state that forbids abortions but can't provide adequate care or placement for the children in foster care now? Or a state that forbids abortions but doesn't have enough food to feed the babies that are here now? Or a welfare department whose HR department knowingly releases welfare recipient information? I could provide proof if you like. A welfare department that knowingly feeds starving humans, starving humans, expired food? And I've brought that to your attention before. And please, don't get me started on the Sheriff's Department requesting for new weapons, like on April 27, when the Sacramento Sheriff Captain Dan Donelli requested for weapons, weapons he admitted he was not familiar with, weapons he admitted he doesn't know what they do, and weapons he admitted he doesn't know why they'd use them. I want all my citizens in my city to be safe and protected, but not at the cost or experimentation of my people. Rest in peace to Stefan Clark. I can only hope that this makes it to Stephonte Clark. Your tragedy was a result of a weapon that they were familiar with. What demographic do you think they will use these new weapons on, or should I say, they will learn how to use these new weapons on, that they're requesting? I said that as long as I'm here, it means you are not doing your job. So now my question is, why are you guys still here?
Thank you, Ryan. Appreciate your comments this morning.
Thank you.
Okay, next, we have Seth Alexander and Ted Samara. I don't know which order you want to go in, but you're welcome to approach the podium. Good morning, Seth.
Good morning. Thank you. I'm here to speak about the 008 contract negotiations. It's kind of ironic that we're here speaking about that on the same day you're approving the contract for the 005 bargaining unit, which is also represented by us. I want to highlight one major difference between the two negotiations. In the 005 contract, the county was willing to offer additional monies for the lowest-paid classifications in that bargaining unit, and they continued to refuse to do so for the 008 bargaining unit. Three classifications, the human service assistants, the child development specialists, and the family service workers are the three lowest-paid classes in 008, and they all do critical work for this county. The FSWs are responsible for transporting children who are in care of the state. They get kids who are in foster care to school at their home districts. They take them and observe visitations with their families. The CDSs care for children who've been taken from their homes before they're placed in placement. They also care for children while they're waiting to attend court hearings, and they help escort them there. This is vital work that these workers are doing for your county, and they do it for very little money, and all they're asking for is to get represented and recognized for the work that they do. And thus far, this county has refused to do so, and that's part of why we're where we are right now. That's all I want to say on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Next, Mr. Samara.
Good morning, Ted. Good morning, Board. I have a little bit more to say than my agent there, Seth Alexander. Ted Samara, Director of Director of United Public Employees. We appreciate the strides we made with the 005 bargaining unit, and it's in front of you all today for your party to ratify that. And we appreciate what you all afforded for those lower-paid classifications to receive additional equities. However, you're failing with the 008 bargaining unit in recognizing those classifications and what Seth just recognized, which are the lowest-paid classifications. To try to do comparables to some of these classifications, such as the FSWs, even the CDCs and HSAs, it's going to be hard to find, because those classifications are unique to Sacramento County and the population in which they serve. They're unique. So basically, you're pretty much comparing them to themselves. And I know we can't get into bargaining here with you all, but it is always the response we get during the course of this bargaining with our 008 bargaining unit that it's you all that is inhibiting the ability for them to receive more. And hence why we're here for, what, the fourth time in front of this board, asking you, praying to you that you do the right thing. You all received my letter I sent to you all over the weekend of our notice of intent to strike. And also emphasize, and there it is, you all that could stop us from doing so. We can't wait a couple months to meet again. All right, I'm going to be meeting with my folks tomorrow to help narrow down a lot of these proposals, and we need you to do the same. We're not, there's over 1,800 in this bargaining unit that we're going to be calling off to strike in less than 10 days. And we hope and pray you do the right thing by recognizing and appreciating and valuing those employees, especially those lower-paid classifications within the bargaining unit, and the sacrifices that they do on an everyday basis to provide services to children and to the most needy, provided to them. It is up to you. We do not want to fill this chamber with red or the quad out there with red. We want, you are the ones that can prevent that. You are the ones. Regardless of what, if a mediator's going to call me and saying, hey, I'm breaching confidentiality, which I don't believe I am. Regardless of what's said to me behind closed doors, I want what is right. You should as well. We're not asking for the stars and moon. It is 1%, 3% we're asking for these classifications, 3% for less than 100. You guys gave over 600 3% in the 005 bargaining unit of the lowest-paid classifications, in which they deserve. So we ask that you do the same here. Thank you, and God bless.
Thank you, Ted. Okay, I don't have anybody else in chambers on off-agendas, so if there's somebody else here that intended to address the board on an item not on the agenda, please get a speaker form to our clerk, and we'll call upon you. But we do have someone on the phone who understands it, so.
No, actually, they were calling for a consent item, so it's been transferred.
All right. So is there anyone else here on items that's not on the agenda? Otherwise, I'm going to close comments on non-Agenda items. Okay, then we'll bring it back to our clerk, then for our consent calendar, our addendum agenda, and items that need to be acted upon. And so I'll turn to you, Flo.
Okay, so for your matters today, you have an addendum agenda with consent matters, items 1 through 2. And then for your regular agenda, you have consent matters, items 2 through 56, and I do have comments. So for your addendum consent matters, items 1 through 2, item 1, you're adopting an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending Chapter 4.54 relating to fireworks. You waived reading on this on May 11. Item 2 on the addendum agenda, you are also adopting an ordinance amending Chapter 16.140 of the Sacramento County Code relating to the technology cost recovery fee, and you waived reading on this item on May 10. For your consent matters on your regular agenda, items 2 through 56, item 6, you are approving the Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission Joint Powers Agency Agreement and introducing an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending Sections 5.50.104 and 5.50.112 relating to Sacramento Metropolitan Cable Television Commission and waiving full reading and continuing to June 7 for adoption. For item number 10, I do need a motion to continue this to June 7. This is to authorize the execution of a right-of-way contract and a grant deed with the State of California for the sale of a portion of county-owned real property located within the American River Parkway Paradise Beach area adjacent to Interstate 80 business in the city of Sacramento. And the environmental document is a mitigated negative declaration.
Ms. Serna.
Yeah, I'll move to continue item 10.
Okay, so let's move to second to continue item number 10 until June 7. Is there anyone who wish to address this item? Anybody signed to speak?
No.
Okay, all right. And when it does come for action, it requires a four-fifth vote, does it not?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. If there's nothing further, and the motion is to move item 10, and seconded, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you.
And that concludes my notes for your addendum agenda and your regular agenda.
All right. And I don't have anyone in chambers that signed up to speak on any of the items, either addendum agenda, I know I see Mr. Revell here, I don't know if he intended to speak, but don't think so, nor the regular agenda. So let me go to my colleagues. I'll search to my left first, any items you wish to call out to my right, anyone? Supervisor Desmond? Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Just a comment and a question on item 14.
Go ahead.
Are we on those items yet?
Yeah, we have to go ahead and call the item.
Okay. Mr. Desmond, did you say 14?
14, yes.
Yes, that's to authorize the Director of Airports to consent to the assignment of the Agreement for Property and Building Rental and Operating Rights Sacramento Executive Airport between the County of Sacramento and Patterson Aircraft Company.
Thank you. And just, I had a conversation with our county exec and Cindy Nickel, Director of Airports, the other day about a somewhat related item. There was a guarantee that was executed, I think, 16 years ago when there was a change in ownership structure relating to Patterson Aviation, where Patterson guaranteed SAC Jet's obligations. And you mentioned to me this morning that we will be seeing something back here at the Board relating to that guarantee. Is that right, Cindy?
Yes, indeed, thank you. We're thrilled with this acquisition of SAC Jet by Modern Aviation, first of all. And so we will, we have reviewed the 2006 action by the Board as well as the guarantee, and we'll be bringing an item on the 7th of June.
Great.
To extinguish that guarantee.
Okay, thank you very much, Cindy. I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Great, okay. Any other items? Mr. Desmond?
I wanted to call out items 7 and 8. I wanted to make a comment, if I could, please.
For item 7 and 8, approve relief of accountability for uncollectible accounts for Department of Finance Revenue Recovery, write-off of fees associated with Assembly Bill Number 177 in the amount of $72,496, $496,364.62, and approve relief of accountability for uncollectible accounts for Department of Finance Revenue Recovery, write-off fees associated with Assembly Bill 1869 in the amount of $118,388,757.15.
My comment is, and I may be in form of a bit of a question, too, is that the calculations that were made here, there's no kind of begin date, we have the end date because of the legislation when we're going to write these off. So I don't know if these accumulated over a period of three years, five years, 10 years? And how the calculation was made that $191 million, and I don't know if those are per ordinances that set certain recovery rates, I mean, for probation department alone, it's, you know, order of magnitude of $700, $800 million. And so I support the items, obviously, it's the law. But I guess, and I'm curious as to these calculations, and there's very little information, at least in the cover staff report, that says, you know, the hourly rate. I don't know if this is standard or it's an exaggeration. It sounds like a heck of a lot of money to be written off. We're going to write these off irrespective of whether they're worth a dollar or 100 million, but it just seemed to me, when I saw these two items, and I know we briefed on Friday, so I got a chance to talk with you yesterday, but about this, but I guess I'm curious. I don't know if somebody in the audience, you know, that could explain how these were calculated. I mean, it said they were certified under, you know, certainly Mr. Lamar's departmental review of it, but I guess I'm curious. It just, there's not a lot of information that tells us how you arrived at these numbers, or whoever arrived at the numbers.
So I don't have an answer for you right away. I have an assumption, which is dangerous.
Okay.
Is Mr. Lamera on the line?
Yes, this is Ben.
Oh, hi. Go ahead, Ben.
Hi. So these are fees that are, I mean, once they're put on the books in revenue recovery into their system, they'll stay in the system. So these go way back, in 2009, we actually did a conversion into a new system. Some of these date, you know, beyond that. And so about half of the dollars that we're writing off are prior to 2009.
Okay.
So they've accumulated, there's probably about, you know, I want to say for AB 177, we probably add maybe three and a half to four and a half million annually in those fees. And then for AB 1869, it can range from $4 million to, looks like, $7.5 million each year. And so these are, these fees are very difficult to collect, and those that are charged these fees are really not in a position, in most cases, to be able to pay. And so they sit in our books, in our system, but they may be dormant, they may not be collecting, I mean, they may be very difficult to collect. And so that's really what makes up these fees. It dates back to who knows how long. Like I said, in 2009, we brought in probably close to half of those fees into a new system.
Well, thanks, Ben. I guess my question is, then, why did we have to wait for the state legislature to tell us to their legislative process that we needed to no longer, one, collect, but also carry these? It would seem to me that at some point in time, and to your point, I appreciate the explanation, that if these were dormant and we're carrying them on the books for 15, 20, 25 years, I guess the practicalities of that, and I would assume we would have had the authority and would still have the authority as relates to relief of accountability, we see it on an annual basis for lost items and for certainly areas that are related to human assistance and general assistance, awards and so forth, and just, you know, a number of other areas where they're either legal processes would allow for recovery, but people are deceased, or we find no longer practically pursue. Why in the area of law enforcement did we, you know, did we carry these for so long? And maybe you don't have an explanation, so I'm not putting off on you, but it just seems to me to carry these for, again, because they show on people's records. And I know we're in an era where we're, you know, certainly talking about folks being able to expunge certain things, certainly to get relief, but I'm just curious, is this something that, I assume our Board would have the authority a long time ago to have given relief on these if we had chosen or been brought to our attention? Is that accurate?
No, they're court-ordered debt that goes along with the services that were being provided there. So that, and so we really couldn't just come out and just say, let's just write these off.
But not all these are court-ordered debt, are they? Some of the, some of the fees that are on the schedule are for assignment, for services provided by the Sheriff's Department, and maybe they are court-ordered. I guess, I don't want to parse it too much here this morning, but I just, you know, booking fees are not court-ordered. They're adopted, they're in legislation, we charge for booking fees. But I, so I'm curious, you know, home detention fees, home detention may be ordered by the courts, but those fees are set on a schedule that we charge?
Yes, and I would have to look further into that piece, but it may be the courts that have requested them to, you know, to be in probation or to be in certain programs, and there are charges associated with that. As far as, did we have to charge them? I'd have to look further into that.
Okay. Again, I know, you know, I know this kind of catching you a bit off-guard here this morning, but I just, I guess maybe I could turn to counsel. Lisa, is there anything you could offer? Again, again, we're going to do this, I mean, it's a lot, but I'm just curious, as I thought about this a bit, as to how we carry something for so long, and I appreciate Ben's explanation, so.
Right, well, I think the process is just getting caught up with the legislation, if I'm reading it correctly, because these are statutorily created fees that are now not allowed to be collected based on this legislation. So I think that really is the key to the reason why we're doing this at this point.
So, for example, probation department, where we show a write-off of $92 million, that was, those were all court-ordered?
Again, I don't know the specific details of those fees, but I'm assuming that each department went through and cross-checked which fees they were no longer allowed to collect based on this legislation. I was not involved in that process. Again, I can find out if anybody in my office was, but I would assume that there would be a very detailed look into that dollar amount of, you know, write-offs.
And these were all held by Department Revenue Recovery?
That's my understanding, and Ben may have a better handle on that.
Not all of those were being collected by Revenue Recovery. There's pieces that were actually in AB 1869 that the Sheriff's Office was the one responsible for, or they had taken on the responsibility for collecting those fees. I don't have it identified on here as to which ones they were collecting.
So maybe rather than spend time this morning, again, you know, I'm prepared to support these items, but would it be possible, and maybe have it so we get on the agenda, so it would be, information be on our public website? I think what's been offered here is given certainly a better understanding for me as to how long these have been carried. But if we could have, again, a little more detail, as Ben and certainly Lisa have elaborated, and maybe, again, without knowing all the detail here this morning, I guess I'd like to see maybe another item just on consent for information or receiving file, how we do it, that would give that detailed information, so somebody could track that. Again, I just think it's important, because there were some information gaps here, as far as I'm concerned, so.
We could certainly look into that, and it also is important to note that these fines and fees will no longer accumulate because we're not allowed to charge them.
Right, right. That was clear, so, okay, all right. Anything else, Ben? Otherwise?
That was it.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. All right, that's all I had.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, do we have anybody on the line to speak?
We do. We have some callers for your addendum agenda item, I believe, addendum agenda item 1 on the fireworks.
Okay, all right, then, we'll go ahead and call that. Oh, you already read it into the record, but.
Yeah, would you like me to read it again?
Yeah, go ahead, one more time, yeah.
Sure. Item 1 is adopting an ordinance of the Sacramento County Code amending Chapter 4.54 relating to fireworks. You waived reading on this on May 11. And Jillian, if you could transfer the first caller?
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Thank you, Flo. My name is Lee Miller. I live in the unincorporated county in District 5. As a result of the adoption of this ordinance, we will now have five incorporated cities in the Sacramento County, along with the unincorporated area within the Sacramento County that have adopted the Illegal Fireworks Social Host Ordinance. Residents Against Illegal Fireworks would like to express their serious appreciation to the Board of Supervisors, the County Executives, the County Council, Undersheriff Barnes, and other county departments for their contribution to this proposal. That's all for right now. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lee. Appreciate your efforts as well, and those of your colleagues in bringing this thing forward, so, okay.
Thank you, Supervisor. Bye.
Bye.
Next caller.
Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have three minutes.
Oh, okay. Can I start right now?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name is Francesca Retano. I'm a member of Residents Against Illegal Fireworks and also a board member of the Elmhurst Neighborhood Association, which wrote a letter back in April in support of
Hi, caller, please start with your comments, you have three minutes.
Oh, okay, can I start right now?
Yes, please.
Okay, my name is Francesca Retano. I'm a member of Residents Against Illegal Fireworks and also a board member of the Elmhurst Neighborhood Association, which wrote a letter back in April in support of the social host ordinance and cost recovery. And we've come a long way, I hope you adopt this today, but I do want, this is mainly to thank everybody in a way, the Board of Supervisors, every member, the County Executive, Eric Jones, the County Council, Under Sheriff Barnes, and county staff that have worked on it. This has been a long haul, and this problem has grown over the years in the county. We are going into an extended drought, please do not hold this item up, please move it forward, please get it in place for the Fourth of July this year. And again, I mainly want to thank everybody, this has been a long, long process. Thank you.
Thank you, Francesca.
That concludes your callers for the consent items.
Okay.
And the addendum consent.
Okay, so that concludes commentary on all the items on consent calendar, and those, we've taken action on, on one of those. And then a motion would be in order for the addendum agenda and the consent calendar. So moved.
Okay.
Moving second then to approve. If there's nothing further, then please vote.
Hey, that's a unanimous vote, and let the record reflect that for item 10 on your regular agenda, you did take a separate motion to continue that item to June 7th. And this does approve your addendum agendas consents one through two and two through 56, with the exception of item 10.
Okay, thank you, Flo. All right, let's go on to our next item.
Hey, item 57 is a presentation of resolution honoring the Veterans Affiliated Council at the 75th Annual Memorial Day Ceremony.
All right. Mr. Kennedy, I see you have some visitors in the audience.
Thank you, Chair. It's good to be here today, haven't actually been up here in a long time. Here with the resolution honoring the Veterans Affiliated Council and the 75th Annual Memorial Day Ceremony. Whereas Memorial Day is an American holiday, observed on the last Monday of May this year, the 30th day of May, that honors the men and women who died while serving the United States military. And whereas the Sacramento County is proud to be home of more than 84,000 veterans, and alongside them, a majority of the Sacramento communities observes Memorial Day by visiting cemeteries or memorials. Whereas the Veterans Affiliated Council, VAC, serves as a clearinghouse for legislative information and honors the supports, activities sponsored for veterans and active military personnel here in Sacramento. Whereas Civil War, World War I, World War II, Korean War, Vietnam veterans are represented by two VAC monuments in the Sacramento Historic Cemetery, one of which is the Historic Obelisk in the Veterans Memorial Area. And whereas for the last 75 years, the VAC has led the community through the four-day span of Memorial Day weekend, hosting multiple events, such as the Friday Prior to Memorial Day event of placing over 5,000 flags on the graves of each of our beloved veterans in a flag raising ceremony. And whereas this year, the Memorial Day Ceremony will continue at the Sacramento Historical Cemetery on Saturday, May 28th, 2022, at which the VAC conducts a ceremony to honor the sacrifices made by our fallen heroes by reading Governor's Proclamation, which is nearly as important as this proclamation, providing walking tours through the cemetery to educate the community and facilitating a time of remembrance for Sacramento community. Now therefore, be it resolved and, and ordered, that I, Patrick Kennedy, Supervisor of Second District, County of Sacramento, State of California, on behalf of the Board of Supervisors and the people of Sacramento County, recognize and honor the Veterans Affiliated Council, VAC, at the 75th Annual Memorial Day Ceremony at the Sacramento Historical Cemetery and encourages the community to come and support all our veterans and their families at this event on Saturday, May 28th, 2022. Gentlemen, I will be there, I look forward to having our community join us. And with that, I would like to introduce William Franco, the Commander of the VAC.
Thank you all for having us here today. I'm rather tickled, to say the least, and, and thank you all. Sue, you know you very near and dear. Phil, we appreciate you. Don, you've been a lifelong supporter of the Veteran Affiliated Council, as we know. Mr. Kennedy, I greatly appreciate you doing this for me, I'm greatly honored. And Mr. Desmond, for putting this all together and bringing us here together today. The VAC has been a piece of Sacramento for over 100 years now, and we are very fortunate to have the support of the community. And with that, I wanted to introduce one of my mentors at the VAC. This is Leroy Adams. He's been a mentor to me and an integral person at the VAC, and I just wanted to give him a couple of minutes to say something nice.
Great, thanks, William. Good morning, Leroy, good to see you.
Good morning, Supervisor Natoli and Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Kennedy, Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Frost. I'm the second oldest member in the VAC, I came a part of it in 1977. Mr. Campiel has one year on me, he's 98. He would have been here if he could have, but I just want to thank the citizens of Sacramento County of supporting our veterans. In my service, I served as a supply officer of a ballistic missile submarine, made 19 patrols on, on the submarines. And it, things have changed a lot since here, since 1977, but I'd like to thank the citizens of Sacramento County for, for supporting our veterans all the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Leroy.
Thank you.
Thanks. And William, Leroy, before you leave, I know a couple of members of the board maybe all want to speak, so Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Desmond, so.
Thank you, Chair Natoli, I just wanted to thank you for all that you do in the community, and I also wanted to ask you, where and what time is your event on the 28th?
You guys are all welcome to join us. So it's located at the Sacramento Historical Cemetery. It'll start at 11:00 AM on the 28th. You're also welcome to join us on the 27th for the flag laying ceremony, that starts at 5:30. I'll be there setting up at 4:00 AM. Both of them are located at 1,000 Broadway. So that's, well, I was just talking with the, the city cemetery manager, making sure everything's all nice and pristine, because we know the watering conditions, right?
Right, right.
Putting in 5,000 of those flags in hardpan dirt can be a little cumbersome, so I'm hoping we can get a little bit of moisture on that dirt.
Do the scouts, the scouts still assist you with that? I know you have some of the voice scouts.
Affirmative, yes, we're going to have three troops out there. So we're expecting about 150 volunteers. We'd love to have anybody in the community come out and join and be a part of that. It's, it's one of those things that, it's really inspiring when you're done and you get to look at that field of full flags of all our heroes, right?
Very impressive, yes. Very moving.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Congratulations.
Of course, you're more than welcome to join us.
Great, thanks. Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank Supervisor Kennedy for bringing this forward, but most importantly, William and, and Leroy, thank you very much for your service. Honored certainly to have you join us in the chambers today. And I intend to be there on Saturday as well to join you for the Memorial Day celebration. Thank you.
Great. And I would just note, I know that, you know, in addition to the services you have planned, I know throughout the community, in different communities, there are, you know, Memorial Day observances on Saturday, but also, I think, on Monday in a number of communities. And I think it really is not only fitting, but it's an important tribute to certainly the fallen military personnel throughout the ages, but also to honor, you know, veterans who, side by side with folks who didn't return alive, have, you know, served this country very honorably. So I wanted to just thank you for your leadership, William, and certainly Leroy. I see Leroy, over the years, that I don't think he misses a veteran's function that supports, not just observances on Memorial Day, but Leroy, you've been very stellar, and thank you for your work, and certainly to the council. And I thank Supervisor Kennedy for making sure we had an opportunity here this morning to, to recognize you. So now I have, again, Supervisor Frost and Supervisor Serna? Yep. Oh, Supervisor Serna, okay, Phil.
Thank you. So thank you, gentlemen, for, for being here, it's good to see you. I think the last time I saw you, we were on the west steps of the Capitol.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to take this opportunity to not just thank you for your service and obviously share, you know, the rightful respect and, and, you know, express the specialness of Memorial Day as it relates to the fallen heroes, the vets that served this country so honorably, but also to the families. To the families of the fallen, I think, is something that we should be mindful of during Memorial Day, as well as those that have passed and serve us to the, to the country. And I too look forward to being with you at not just the event on, on Saturday, but the multitude of events that I know you're responsible for throughout the year. So congratulations on the, the resolution and look forward to seeing you again here in the chambers.
Thank you, guys, thank you.
Thanks again.
I appreciate you. Thank you again, Mr. Kennedy.
Good, thank you, William, thanks, Leroy.
Have a wonderful day.
Yeah, you too. Okay. All right, with that, and just a reminder to folks who may be watching, I assume there's some information that'll be out there in local press that will give the dates and times for the observances, but we heard that a couple of them had announced here this morning, but I know there's several of them on Monday as well. Okay, with that, Ms. Evans, back to you.
That was really nice.
Yes.
Okay, item 58, this is the Sacramento County Landscaping Maintenance District, Zone Four Public Hearing on the Detachment of the Green Farms Estates Subdivisions, authorizing the Director of the Department of General Services or designee to execute a quitclaim deed and transfer landscape maintenance responsibility. And these would be for properties 28902010790000 and 28902010800000 to the Green Farms Estates Homeowners Association, the environmental determination is exempt.
Okay, and we have Mr. Cudon with us, good morning, Dorothy.
Good morning, Chair Natoli and members of the board. The Green Farm Estates subdivision is located on the south side of Ferrox Boulevard, east of Eastern Avenue, and it has been in the Landscape Maintenance District since 2002. There have been discussions for the Homeowners Association to assume maintenance responsibilities for those parcels, landscape parcels fronting Ferrox Boulevard. So therefore, on April 26th, the Board adopted a resolution of intention to detach the subdivision from the district and set today as to, as the, for the public hearing. We have since been notified by the Homeowners Association that they wish to provide formal approval for this item, and will be discussing this matter at their June 13th meeting. And so therefore, they've requested that this item be continued to July 12th, at which time the HOA representatives will be available to provide their support. And so therefore, additionally, to not require the additional mailing and publication of the public notice which occurred on May 9th, we request that the Board officially open the public hearing and continue the matter to July 12th. And so unless there are any questions for me or the Department of Transportation staff who are available, that concludes our presentation.
Okay, before I open the public hearing, any questions of Dorothy or staff on this? All right, I don't see anyone in the queue, so with that, then I'll go ahead and open the public hearing, and recognizing that you just reported that the association wants to take an opportunity to formally review this at their June 13th meeting, so unless there's anyone here in chambers or anyone on the phone, which we have none, then we will go ahead and continue, keep the public hearing open and continue this matter to July the 12th.
You need a motion?
Yes, a motion. Okay, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
It's moving second, do we need to have a time, a set time, it'll be 10:00 AM or would, for the continuance?
Actually, I'll coordinate that with the Clerk of the Board as far as the time or... Okay.
Because we have, well, we have a public hearing, so we may want to just note it, and it won't be heard any sooner than, so you want to do it 10:00 o'clock on the 12th? The reason I ask that is that.
We do have some other items that have already been noticed at 10:00 AM on the 12th.
10:01? We're quick.
We can put it at 10:30.
10:30, Flo, that works? Okay. All right, very good. So that's the motion then, to continue this matter to July 12th, 10:30 in the morning? Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you.
Thank you, see you July 12th then.
Great, thank you, Dorothy. Thanks, Flo.
You're welcome. Item 59, Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District Public Hearing on the Annexation of the Tierra del Sol subdivision and the Levy of Assessments, approve the advanced funding agreement, direct the clerk to tabulate the protest ballot and annex the subdivision to the district and confirm the levy of assessments. The environmental determination is exempt.
Okay. Good morning, Cheyenne.
Good morning, good morning, Chairman Natoli and members of the board. I'm Cheyenne Roon with the County Engineering Division. The Tierra del Sol project is located at the northeast corner of Alberta Road and Quiet Knolls Drive, and consists of 73 residential units. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for landscape maintenance. The Department of Transportation determined that the Sacramento County Landscape Maintenance District would be the appropriate district to provide these services. The project proponent submitted an application to initiate the annexation process, and on April 8th, a notice and ballot was sent to the project, to the property owner. Currently, the project site consists of three APNs, and it was recently discovered that two of the parcels are already in the district, and only one parcel requires annexation into the district, and that parcel is APN number 2030070075. In this district, rates do not adjust annually, and the residential rate is $42.50. So for the two existing parcels in the district, they collectively are assessed $85 annually. However, the project, which consists of 73 units, would be assessed $3,102.50 collectively. With this information, staff recommends that you adopt the resolution to execute the advanced funding agreement, open the public hearing, to, open the public hearing to consider all oral and written testimony, close the public hearing, and direct the clerk of the Board to tabulate the ballots.
Thank you. All right, we'll go ahead then, unless there's any questions, I don't see anyone in the queue, and go ahead and, and open the public hearing.
We do not have any public comments on this item.
All right, so we don't have any public comments, I see no one in chambers wishing to comment, and we have none on the phone, so with that, then I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the clerk to tabulate the results.
Okay, so we received one ballot. The legal owner is Antelope Residential Properties. These are for parcel numbers 2030070075, 203070138, and 203070139. And the site address is Quiet Knolls Drive in Antelope, California, and they are in agreement of the proposed assessment.
Okay, and the clerk has read into the record, so I'll turn it back to you, Cheyenne, to help us fill in the resolution before we consider a motion by the board.
Thank you. Section two, at the close of the public hearing, the Board had received zero protests. Section three, at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received one protest ballot tolling 100% of the assessments to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the assessments, and 0% was in opposition.
Okay, very good. All right, we do have the resolution in now completed, so we'll turn to the board for a motion.
So moved.
It's moved.
Second.
Moving second then to prove the action as recommended, recognizing the resolution, the numbers are clear. So with that, we'll, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good. All right, next item, please.
Okay, item 60, this is for County Service Area Number One, Zone Number One, Public Hearing on the Benefit Category Change and Levy of Increased Service Charges for Florin Vineyards One and Two.
Okay, Cheyenne, you're back again. Okay, Cheyenne, you're back again.
Thank you, members of the Board. I am Cheyenne Raymond with the County Engineering Division. The Florin Vineyards One and Two project is located in the north, is located in the northwest corner of South Watt Avenue and Florin Road. During the entitlement process, the project was conditioned to provide full funding for street and safety light maintenance. County Service Area Number One provides these services, and the five parcels that are currently seeking this entitlement are in that district and would simply need a change in benefit category to satisfy this condition. The project proponents submitted an application initiating the benefit category change process. A notice and ballot were mailed to the property owners informing of, informing them of today's public hearing. Each parcel is currently assessed $2.56 for a total of $12.80 annually in the street light only category. The proposed change in benefit category is into the enhanced street and safety light category. For residential units, the current rate is $54.46, and for non-residential units, they are assessed approximately $0.89 per linear foot of street frontage. The project consists of 285 residential units and several non-residential units, which include a park, drainage conveyance and detention, open spaces, landscaping, and remainder lots. Therefore, the total project would be assessed $19,554.74. Staff recommends the Board open the public hearing to consider all written and oral testimony, close the public hearing, direct the Clerk of the Board to tabulate the returned ballots.
Thanks, Cheyenne. All right, with that, open the public hearing and do we have any comments?
We did not have any public comments for this item.
Okay, no one in the audience, I have no speaker forms, so with that, I will close the public hearing and direct the Clerk to tabulate the...
Okay, I'm going to be opening two ballots. Okay, this legal owner is the Lucic Family Revocable Trust, parcel number 0640072014, address 8895 South Watt Avenue, Sacramento, 95829, and this is regarding the annual service charge, and they are in favor of that proposed change. And let me get to the second ballot. Okay, the legal owner is Florin Vineyards 273 LLC, parcel number 0640072003, 0640072024, 0640072040, 6855 Gardner Avenue and 8891 Florin Road, Sacramento, 95828. They are also in favor of the proposed change to the benefit categories, and that's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Flo. Okay, Cheyenne, you want to give us a summary, please?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Section 2, at the close of the hearing, the Board had received zero written protests. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the Board had received two protest ballots totaling 92% of the total service charges to be levied, of which 92% was in favor of the benefit category change and 0% was in opposition.
And 8% didn't respond?
Yes, 8% did not respond.
Okay, all right, very good. Nothing further, discern?
Yeah, move the item.
Okay, been moved, been moved in second then to approve the item, noting the resolution, and with that then, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, very good. Thanks, Cheyenne. Appreciate your work. Okay, next item.
Okay, for item 61, authorization for the issuance and sale of bonds for the Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Bonds, election of 2020 Measure H, 2022 Series A, and an amount not to exceed 225 million by a negotiated sale and approval of related documents and certain other related actions. Authorization for the levy of taxes for the Sacramento City Unified School District 2022 General Obligation Refunding Bonds, accepting the designation as paying agent, therefore and directing the County Director of Finance to maintain taxes on the tax roll.
Okay, do we have a presenter on this item? Okay.
Yes, this is Colin Bettis, the County Debt Officer.
Hello, Colin.
Good morning, Chair Natoli and Supervisor. The item before you now is the issuance of the Sacramento City Unified School District General Obligation Bonds election of 2020 Measure H, Series 2022, in a not to exceed amount of $225 million. These bonds are intended to fund a variety of projects, list of which is included as an exhibit to the Board item. The Sacramento City Unified School District Board requests that the county authorize the issuance and sale of the general obligation bonds. The district has self-certified its most recent interim finance report as qualified, which prevents it from selling bonds on its own behalf. The school district will issue its own refunding bonds in an amount not to exceed 65 million for the purpose, for the prior issuances of general obligation bonds for savings of greater than 5%. For all series of bonds planned to be issued, the county will act as the paying agent. While the county will act as paying agent, no revenues of the county are pledged for the payment of the bonds. There are four recommendations before the Boards of Supervisors today that will allow the county to issue the debt on behalf of the Sacramento City Unified School District and to serve as the paying agent on the bonds. Should you have any questions, Joe Crump of Dale Scott &amp; Company, the financial advisor of the school district, is available on the conference line, and I'm also available for any questions you may have. I do want to mention that the bonds will all be issued as fixed rate bonds. There will be no variable bonds, and there will be no capital appreciation bonds, and this concludes my presentation.
Thank you, Colin, for your presentation. So bring it back to the Board, any questions for Mr. Bettis or Mr. Crump? All right, seeing none in the queue, then I'll bring it back to the Board. Do we have any comments on the telephone line, anyone?
Uh, no. Did you officially open the public hearing?
Nope. Public hearing's officially opened.
No public comments.
And there's no public comments? With that, then we'll close the public hearing officially. Very good. Okay, we have a motion. Moving second then to prove this recommendation is outlined in our staff report, and if there's nothing further then, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Very good, thanks. All right, item 62.
Okay, for item 62, we just barely made it by four minutes. So I am going to be asking the Board to continue this item to June 7th at 10:30. This was County Service Area Number One, to conduct a public hearing on the fiscal year 2022-23 service charges, confirm Engineer's Report, and adopt a resolution setting service charges for fiscal year 2022-23. The continuation request is just due to noticing, it didn't get properly noticed.
Okay, all right. Do we have a motion to continue? Chair, okay, Chair moved seconded by Mr. Desmond to continue this item to June 7th at 10:00 AM. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Excuse me, 10:30 AM? 10:30?
10:30.
Yeah, okay. All right, that takes us through the morning agenda. I guess we can take up the appointments, nominations.
Yeah, that would be great, if we could get that out of the way. Let me jump to that. That's item number 66. Do you guys have your notes? All right, you're continuing to June 14th, the Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, Disability Advisory Commission, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. You're continuing to July 12th, the Antelope Community Planning Advisory Council, Carmichael Recreation and Park District, Civil Service Commission, Casamnus Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Maternal, Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board, Natomas Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Bicycle Advisory Committee, and the Veterans Advisory Commission. And you do have some matters today, Adult and Aging Commission.
Okay, the Chief of Staff recommends continuing this item to June 7th, pending interview.
Okay. Area for Agency on Aging Advisory Council.
Recommendation is to nominate Julie Bates and continue the remainder to July the 12th.
Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please continue to June 14th.
Okay. And Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council.
Please nominate George Lowry.
And do you want to continue the remainder to June 14th?
Sure. Yes, I do.
Sacramento County Mental Health Board.
Please continue to 614.
Okay. And last is the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. We have two, so Supervisor Kennedy.
Continue to June 14th?
June 14th, okay. And Mr. Natoli.
Yes, ditto for D5.
Got it. And that concludes your nominations.
Okay. Any other order of business for the morning? If not, we'll be back in chambers. We have no closed session today, correct? Okay. All right, so we'll be back in chambers at 2:00 for the afternoon items, so thank you all for being with us and enjoy the rest of the morning. Want to welcome folks back for the afternoon portion of the May 24th, 2022 Meeting of Sacramento County Board of Supervisors. I know we have several presentations this afternoon and appreciate the folks that are going to be with us throughout the course of the rest of the agenda to make those presentations. So with that, I'll have our Clerk call a roll to establish a quorum, and then we'll go into our agenda presentations.
Yes, okay, Supervisors Serna?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Thank you. And Supervisor Kennedy will be arriving shortly, so.
Okay, thank you. Item 63 is your 2022 Elder Death Review Team Report.
Okay, I don't know if Dawn's going to, Dawn Bleday, is it Bleday or Bledet?
Bleday.
Bleday, Dawn Bleday from District Attorney's Office will be one of our presenters today, and thanks for being with us. Bruce, did you want to make any introducing, any comments to introduce this item or...
Mr. Chairman, I think we'll have some comments after the presentation. We also have Michelle Cahaez on the line, too, that can comment on the report as well.
Okay, so we do have Michelle. Is there anybody else on the line? Just Michelle?
That's all. She might have someone from her staff on, Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure.
Okay, all right. All right, Dawn, well, I'll turn it over to you, and thank you for being here. I know it's the annual report and some disturbing information in here, but also obviously working to try to help us better understand some of the outcomes and the Y4s and maybe to make some improvements that will hopefully prevent some of the things that were listed. I would just tell you that it seemed like you looked at a lot more cases this year than maybe in the past. I don't know, I just need to review.
That may be because the time period of the report actually was from 2019 to 2021, so we didn't give you a report during the COVID shutdown, and because some, the cases weren't getting through the case, their criminal justice system, we didn't have as many to review. Coroner's Office was otherwise engaged, et cetera, so that's probably why you see more, but it also gave us a better database to work from than the annual, and we're considering, Michelle and I, Cahaez have actually talked about trying to do it a two-year, because I think it may give us better information than just a single snapshot of a year.
Okay, very good. Well, Dawn, if you want to just tell us who you are and how you get to be the chosen presenter along with Michelle here today, and then go right into your presentation.
Thank you. My name is Dawn Bleday, and I'm an Assistant Chief Deputy District Attorney at the Sacramento County DA's office. I oversee the Sex Crimes and Family Violence Bureau, which includes elder abuse. We have one dedicated elder abuse prosecutor and a grant-funded elder abuse victim advocate that work exclusively on elder abuse cases involving neglect and physical abuse and, to a lesser extent, financial abuse. So I'm here on behalf of the Elder Death Review Team. The Elder Death Review Team was established in 1999, and that team is a collaborative team of multi-agencies, both community-based and law enforcement, working together in Sacramento County. What we do is discuss Sacramento County's needs in areas of support, education, improved collaboration with respect to neglect and death and even accidental death of our older population. The Death Review Team meets every other month or six times a year. We collect cases and information that are reported to us through the coroner's office. Some of those may be just suspected issues of abuse or neglect, so we delve into them. Ultimately, some of them are concluded to be natural causes, or we look and we see, we probably think this is neglect, but we don't have enough information to prove this, or we know this is neglect, or this is criminal neglect or abuse, and we have actual criminal cases that resulted from those cases. So we're not able to talk about any potential criminal cases until they're through the system, and so some of the dates of the actual deaths are not necessarily reflective of the date of the report, but actually when the death was originally reported. As I said, this report covers 2019 to 2021, and what we found were some trends. Some trends with regard to elder abuse is, number one, it's increased in Sacramento County. As far as the District Attorney's Office is concerned, our filing of cases has increased. We filed 154 cases in 2020, 114 in 2021, and, or excuse me, 154 in 2020, 114 in 2021, and 168 have already been filed. It may not seem like a jump, but on the year that we had lesser cases, I think that was attributable to many of the investigative resources that were devoted to other areas, and we weren't receiving as many reports to file from law enforcement, but we are seeing cases of abuse and neglect increasing in terms of their involvement in the criminal justice system. Of course, we're only seeing a sliver of these cases, the cases that were actually actively investigated by law enforcement and then referred to the DA's office for action or review. The next most common type of case, abuse is the number one, that's where the investigative priorities lie, that's where the law enforcement does get involved, they make sure that investigations are completed, but oftentimes in neglect cases, because they don't necessarily have the specific training to identify elder neglect, they don't necessarily know what they're looking for and what available evidence is out there to help make a case of this. That's both a training issue and a resource issue. On the training part, our elder abuse prosecutor, Tara Crable, is making the rounds and also has recently prepared a video for law enforcement training to, in order to educate our law enforcement officers in Sacramento County as to signs of abuse and neglect in elder situations, and our hope is that that will help increase those cases getting to us for review that have a meaningful investigation where we can make a filing decision or pursue criminal charges where it's warranted. The financial crimes against elders are not necessarily investigated to the extent that actual physical harm cases are investigated, so we don't see that many of those coming our way. I know that there has been, Adult Protective Services has gotten some funding and is doing work in that area. I'd like to see us do more, but with the resources we have at the DA's office, our focus has been on the violent crime aspect of elder care and elder abuse.
Dawn, can I just ask, just give you just for a second while you're on that, because you talked about your staffing, you say you have one attorney, and then you said investigator that are assigned, what's your staffing ratio?
A victim advocate.
Victim advocate.
Yes.
And so you basically have you and one other prosecutor that handle all the cases, and you have other sex crimes as well, right?
I'm not the person who's hands-on, so I oversee the Bureau. The Bureau includes adult sexual assault, child abuse, elder abuse, domestic violence, human trafficking, and animal abuse. So that's my umbrella of bureaus. Under each of those is a supervisor and then assigned deputies. Under elder abuse, though, there's just a single attorney who's doing intake, who's then vertically prosecuting those cases, and then one victim advocate. intake, who's then vertically prosecuting those cases, and then one victim advocate who is assisting. And you can imagine these cases in terms of communication and outreach with elders can take time. It's hard to communicate. Oftentimes, elders don't have a lot of people they talk to. So when they get the opportunity to speak with someone, those conversations become in-depth and we want to be as respectful as we can when we're trying to provide services. So it's a lot of work for one person to be handling all of the calls and setting up resources for victims who are elder.
So again, we're getting too far a skance, but we're going to be talking about budget here in a couple of weeks. And I guess, as I read the report, again, there's, you know, a lot of this is to look back to try to help us going forward. But if we only have one prosecutor assigned, and we have over 200,000 seniors in this community, but of course, there's dependent adults as well, so it's not just those that are, that are 60 or older. But that population's grown. In fact, that stat was pointed out in the report. When I read these scenarios and vignettes of these situations, my God, I, it just, the way people have died and some of it being neglect, some of it being maybe inexperience, but some pretty terrible things. I wouldn't wish this upon anybody, I guess, as I read some of these. And if we only have one prosecutor assigned, I guess, I don't know how this bumps up. Obviously, Anne Marie and her staff have to look at, you included, how you assign folks. But it seems that we're, you know, way short of what we need to be because it's one thing to have APS folks on the front line. But again, there are some cases here, and I'll ask you about them a little later on, at least I made note of a couple of them, where information wasn't presented to the DA. For example, you didn't know the person had been, had died before determination was made. You weren't going to pursue the case because there was other factors involved. And we just have two sentences. So again, you know, how you evaluate those things obviously is much greater detail than what's represented here. But I guess the point I want to make is that if we're serious about doing something, certainly trying to prevent it to begin with, but to intervene if we can, you know, discover and build a system that helps us do that. But at the back end of it, where folks have died in some cases, pretty horrible deaths, at least in their last days, it would seem to me that we need to be able to prosecute. I don't know what the caseload is for your one prosecutor, but in a county this size, if you have one person that can handle that, let alone get into court and have a case prepared, to hold folks accountable. It's not about just the criminal prosecution, but these are some terrible, I wouldn't want this to happen, certainly to anybody I know or family member, but to anybody as I read these. And people that are elders, that are in their 70s, 80s, in a couple of cases, you know, or centenarians. And I, I guess I just, I'm taking it back that we only have one, is it one person in your office with a victim advocate that handles all that caseload? And I don't know what the caseload is for your prosecutor. I guess that's part of my question.
Her caseload is pretty significantly high. And what we've had to do with her caseload actually is cases where there's not necessarily a typical dynamic, where maybe an elder is a victim of a robbery. It's not necessarily like an inter-familial, we have to give those to the felony team attorneys because she can't do all of them. So you can be charged with committing an elder abuse crime just because of the age of the person who you inflicted a crime of violence. So there may be a crime of violence that occurred and because the person is over the age of 65, they, we add this elder abuse.
Yeah, the gentleman was punched in the face at the gas station.
Right. So those cases, exactly. So those cases go to other units and we try and focus on the ones where there's kind of more dynamics at play. Typically, the majority of these cases involve family members who are perpetrating the violence and neglect. And so there's a lot of codependency there, a lot of dynamics similar to domestic violence. The elders don't want to prosecute their children. And so that type of intervention, it takes a little more time to really work through with them. We absolutely could benefit from having more than one dedicated prosecutor. We just, right now at the office, we're really struggling with high caseloads in all of our specialized units because of some of the caseload holdover from the pandemic and just simply because we have more violent crime occurring here.
You know, a couple of things that kind of jumped out to me, and I want you to be able to do your report here, but, you know, there was a case, one of these cases where there was good reason, believe there's criminal neglect. There was another one where, and, you know, it was a suspected homicide, not always family members, I don't think. In one of those cases, it wasn't a family member. And the other one that really got my attention, or a couple of these here, where you actually have either licensed workers, not IHHS, family members receiving pay, and/or facilities. And I know there's a whole state licensing regime and all that. But again, those folks, for a, you know, a significant sum of money in most cases, are paid to take care of folks. And then you have these descriptions of people who battered, bruised, beaten potentially, and die. And yet, there's no prosecution of that. There's really no follow-on to any degree. Again, turn somebody into licensing. And I guess, it seems to me, if we're going to have accountability for folks that are very vulnerable, and whether it's at the hands of family members or others, that, you know, one, there needs to be sufficient resources with the DA's office, but there needs to be sufficient resources with Adult Protective Services and any other agencies that are related here because this is a growing population and the vulnerabilities of folks, and again, I found your chart that listed the ages. You know, there's a large number kind of in that early entry at 60, 65, and then kind of spreads itself out. But to think of somebody who is well into their late 80s, 90s, even 100 years old, that are subject to some of these things that are in, of the 36 cases that you investigate, you know, and get in this report. Again, Bruce, you know, I'm kind of giving a precursor, but my expectation is, is that, one, that hopefully something as it relates to budget and staffing resources, but also that, you know, we take this seriously. We haven't seen this report in a couple of years. But again, as I read this, some last night and some today, it's pretty disturbing. I mean, again, I wouldn't wish this upon anybody. And we're doing what we can in a lot of respects, and this doesn't negate any of the good work that's done at any of the levels, whether it's in prosecutorial arena or in IHHS or facilities that do serve many hundreds, if not thousands, of people. But there needs to be some more accountability because right now, for a variety of reasons, I think there's a real lack of accountability, not by design, but maybe just because of the way this, this system, the number of folks. But the number of cases speaks volumes to, I think, the point you're making earlier, Dawn, but the one that I took from this report as well, so.
No, I, I agree with you absolutely. And in some of those cases that you're mentioning, what happened was there was an informational report taken and then there was no follow-up investigation by law enforcement. So our, my understanding of both the Police Department and the Sheriff's Office is there aren't a dedicated team of elder abuse detectives that are working. There, those teams are also dedicated to child abuse, also dedicated to domestic violence. They're kind of more broad-based and everyone is prioritizing where the investigation should take place. And what we've seen is a lack of follow-up, where we've had to chase down reports, we've had to ask to have an investigator assigned, and, and that's impacted our ability to have a meaningful case to review for prosecution because if we don't have the investigation, things like crimes happening in a care home, I know we have, we just had our EDR meeting and there's a case that's not quite ripe that I won't get into the details, but what I will say is it was at a care facility and the, the individual was taken to the ER and the ER doctors noted significant physical abuse on, on this individual who was deceased. And the problem is, is without somebody identifying which one of the caregivers at the facility was the person to inflict the violence, when it happened, how it happened, and then the competing facts of, you know, elders are susceptible to falls. There's all kinds of, you know, built-in defenses to these crimes. So they're not as easy to prove as the facts are egregious and, and really horrifying for us to read, thinking of our own family members who are older. But thinking as a prosecutor, you know, I need to be able to prove each element and who did this beyond a reasonable doubt. And that takes a collaboration between us and law enforcement, each devoting those resources to making sure those cases are fully investigated. And if we can't have criminal culpability, that licensing has to shut these places down and make sure that they're not functioning.
I would concur with that. And because my takeaway was kind of, you know, old, kind of out of the way and maybe soon be forgotten. And I just think that, you know, the work that's done here can't be any of those things. It needs to be a very, I think, poignant reminder of, you know, of how serious this is. And yeah, you're right, there are circumstances sometimes that, you know, wouldn't lend themselves to what you said, to something that'd be prosecuted. But, you know, we have a, a growing number of seniors and at-risk folks in our communities and obviously we're more and more dependent upon individual care, which I agree with the independency and folks remaining in their home and so forth. But that accountability, because if not, I just think, you know, the report that you've brought forward here today from your review will just be more voluminous in years to come if we don't do something to try to stem this. And I think there's things being done and that's part of the report. So I didn't mean to interrupt your presentation, but this was pretty graphic in my view and I'm sure.
I recognize that. So Adult Protective Services and the Family Justice Center have also both shown an increase in service requests related to our older population. APS received 17,119 calls to the hotline during the fiscal year 2021. That's 121% increase in calls since 2013, 2014. After-hours calls have also increased. In terms of the active open cases for abuse or neglect, they've gone up 72%. So Adult Protective Services is getting hit really hard by these numbers as well. And then as, as you've already observed, the population of the county's elders are growing and the IHSS program has also increased 19% since 2017. And it's expected each year to rise another 5% in terms of the need. We have over 32,000 recipients of in-home support services in Sacramento County. And then we have an incredible shortage of care providers. So once again, we're seeing a shortage of the resource and then an increase of the need, which also can contribute to these types of scenarios happening. Thirty-six deaths were studied. Page seven of the report showed the categorical breakdown. The largest number were accidental deaths. The next was homicide, or excuse me, questionable neglect, then homicide, and then undetermined natural causes were both at about 11%. Suspicious deaths inconclusive, about 8%. And then criminal neglect and abuse were only 3%. So that tells me that many times when going through these cases, we have a frustration. Part of the EDR team collaboration is everyone talking about who had contact with this family or this care provider throughout the process. So did medical have contact? Did we have contact? Did APS have contact? Who knew about this individual and their situation? And many times, nobody did, or limited people had exposure. The elders are isolated. They're not a part of community. Nobody is reaching out or knows the kind of level of care that they're receiving or not receiving. And this was, this results in us not having the right information to really decide where did the breakdown occur? Where could we have intervened? Where could we have maybe provided additional support? We had a number of categorical break, or issues or areas of concern, including homicide, of course, and there wasn't really a consistent theme. The homicides varied, from stranger to acts of violence to familial violence. We saw a number of falls. We saw water safety and fire safety issues. Again, the IHSS care providers who were either improperly trained or incompetent or unable because of substance abuse or other issues to provide the kind of care necessary. We saw abuse and neglect. We saw care facility deaths. And then we also saw a situation where there was a hospital discharge without a care plan that almost immediately resulted in the individual's death. So what, what is the public advice? Some of this is about reaching the public and educating them, is listening, listening to older adults, reaching out to them and to the caregivers. Understand what challenges the family is facing and try to find support for them. Report abuse or suspected abuse to local Adult Protective Services, to an ombudsman, or to the police or law enforcement agency. Use the hotlines. There's national elder abuse hotlines that are available. I have resources in the packet. And increase outreach and education to see the signs of elder abuse and how they're different from the normal aging process. Consistent bruising, shutting down, not wanting to talk about how injuries happened. Seeing ulcers or bed sores happening on a repeated basis or in a severe way. Those are situations where there needs to be intervention. Checking in, providing overburdened caregivers with support, giving counseling, relief care. Adult daycare programs are a great resource, an ability to not only have the person, elder or dependent adult, be seen by other individuals, but also to get that social outlet and to make sure that mentally they're in the best place they can be. And of course, there is also drug and alcohol abuse and mental health issues by some of these caregivers that affects their ability to care. And those resources can additionally help limit these people in having that condition impact the people that they're trusted to care for. So what were risk factors we saw? Current diagnosis of the elder of mental illness or a loss of cognitive function. So as the elder is unable or less able to tell us what's happening with them, how it's happening, how it's not happening, who's caring for them, when they last took their meds, that makes it difficult for us to assess what's going on. If they've had past abuse or drugs or alcohol, that can affect their cognitive abilities and abilities to communicate. Physical health issues.
Dawn, excuse me, just a few pauses for a minute. I think Supervisor Desmond wanted to ask you a question, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Dawn. I, you know, we hear from you and on these cases and then child abuse cases, and you are protecting the most vulnerable in our community. And I thank you for that because it's, I can't imagine, it's an easy job. And this is, I concur with Chair Natoli about how disturbing this is, the statistics, of course. And I had a few questions relating to the IHSS providers, you know, seven of the cases, seven of the 33 cases that you identify. And, and you have several suggestions here, and I, and I look forward to a discussion, you know, really on this board, on what, you know, what we could do or some, are there some suggestions here that we could carry out? But could you tell me what, what kind of training do IHSS providers go through in terms of spotting abuse and neglect? And what are their reporting requirements as an IHSS?
I think Michelle might be in a better position to talk about that.
Well, I just offer some initial comments, Supervisor, and then yes, Michelle can chime in. But as you may know, through our IHSS public authority, training occurs for IHSS providers. But I must tell you, when I look at this report, it raises a lot of questions. I mean, admittedly, we have 32,000 or so IHSS cases, so it's not, I wouldn't call it an indictment of the whole program.
Of course.
But it does raise concerns. And you will see, by the way, in the budget coming forward in June, some increases in both IHSS and APS, which I think can help the discussion, certainly. But I do think we need to look at that training curriculum to explore what we might need to add to it to try to address some of the identifiers and other things that might be necessary. I'm going to suggest to folks that they check with what other counties do on this and see if there's anything we can buffer our training with and what they might be doing in these situations. Again, I don't see it as an indictment as the whole program.
Absolutely.
But when you have these cases, it does suggest that there's something we need to follow up on here. If we get these additional staff, for example, it'll help us with our annual reviews of IHSS cases. And so we can certainly have discussions about how we best use those staff, assuming the board approves them. And if you don't mind, I'll ask Michelle just to weigh in briefly, too. Michelle, if you're on the line? I think she's on the line.
Good afternoon. Yeah, good afternoon. This is Michelle Cahias. So the care providers are actually trained by the IHSS public administrator. So you hear each year from Executive Director John Kazitsa. So his office is responsible for recruiting care providers and getting them on the IHSS provider registry. What I will do is follow up with him to find out what the specific training is that is provided. And, and I will also find out if that same training is provided to family members that are chosen by recipients of services for them to be their provider. So for example, if I say I will have my adult son be my provider, I have the right to make that choice. So I'll find out if he gets a different training than, say, a stranger that would. So I'll find out if he gets a different training than, say, a stranger that would come into my home and provide the care.
Okay. Thank you, Michelle, I appreciate that. I mean, of course, there are a lot of family members that are IHSS providers, and then are subject to certainly the training and the oversight, but so many family members are not. And obviously, that's a big segment of the problem as well. And I agree with you, Bruce, this is in no way a criticism of IHSS, which I think is a terrific program, but we should always be evaluating and see how we can do it better. Another, and, you know, I remember there being a big issue with IHSS in terms of background checks that we did on IHSS providers. And there's, I think, some, been some push and pull over the years. I see that you have, you know, it looks like you are recommending that we take another look at some of the eligibility exclusion categories, which, you know, I would certainly support. But something else you hadn't hear, that I wasn't aware of, Dawn, is that a social worker from the county needs to make a visit every year to an IHSS provider residence? And is that happening? And what is the feedback we're getting from--
Admittedly, it is happening, but admittedly, Supervisor, like many counties, we've had a hard time keeping up with that. So these staffing increases that I mentioned will help, certainly. So we will be monitoring our situation when we get those staff. But it's also a question of what you do when you're out there, too. This report will really help us, I think, focus on the kinds of things that had to be reviewed.
What's happening, yeah.
And how we best use those staff.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Just before you leave that, though, you get to open the door with your question about, and again, there were seven specific cases that referenced IHSS, but they weren't all family members. And there was, you know, a couple here where there'd been a history prior, but then reports either weren't given to DA's office. And again, the conditions, some of these folks who were the, you know, I say the victims, the ones that, you know, the elders that passed away were just, you know, again, I don't need to be graphic by description or in a report, but they were just terrible. I mean, the human condition, the physical condition, and not the mental. And how that, you know, can continue to occur, particularly with folks that either are licensed, because there was another one in the care home where, I think it was, the comment was that, you know, that there was some history of the operator or caretaker of being aggressive or something in that--
Abusive.
Abusive. And so how does, you know, again, you know, it's not all in the DA's realm, or even in APS's realm, but if we know that, then, and there's continued to, again, unless there was some criminal prosecution and we're licensed revocation, they're probably still providing services a day, for all I know. Well, that's wrong.
If I may, Supervisor, I think another follow-up for us is to continue our discussion with state licensing staff on this. My experience is sometimes that unless you push hard with some of those folks, you don't get the kind of follow-up that you might. So I think that's another area that we need to look at. Use this report for some discussion with them as well.
Well, you know, I would go as far to say, because, again, in my experience, I probably wouldn't be as gentle in my description as you are there, Bruce, but is that, again, and maybe watch what we ask for, but if we really are concerned, that, you know, the state has the licensure requirements. But I would think that if a local jurisdiction, i.e. the county of Sacramento--
Yeah.
--wanted to get involved, not necessarily we be the licensing agent, because that's not our role, but that if we wanted to have some ability, maybe delegated or deputized ability, we ought to seek that. You know, again, there's a cost associated with it, but there's a cost associated, a human cost, if we don't seek to do more. And I would suggest that beyond just, you know, I can tell you over the years, you know, I've had the opportunity on a few issues, and again, I won't say that the state folks have been unresponsive, but now I don't like what Dawn describes, or what you would describe, that, well, we got, it's a big state, we only got X amount, blah, blah, blah. You know, if you file a complaint, we have to respond in 10 days. And, yeah, and they do, they do follow up. But I guess some of this has urgency, that if folks don't get attended to, the gentleman who got released from the hospital, who, you know, if there'd been a home healthcare agency notified, but he declined, and he was dead in a few days. And so some of these are more ongoing. I guess what I would suggest to what you just said, that maybe we ought to have a serious conversation. Again, it certainly will have budgetary impacts. But again, it may be the right thing to do, that if we want to step up and be a leader in this regard, then maybe we insert ourselves. Again, hopefully, they would welcome us to do that, to be, play a more active role when it comes to licensure, and certainly at IHHS, we license, you know, we're the ones, we're the, you know, the responsible entity for 32,000 caregivers. And, but when it comes to homes and some of these facilities, some of them are licensed. And the other thing is, a lot of them have not gotten away of licensure. Now we're finding many, many unlicensed facilities. But this, in this one case, they had a history, and, you know, nothing happened. The person died, and no report filed, you know, DA didn't have anything to go off of. And so I guess I would just ask, maybe we take a more serious look at this, you know, it has financial implications, but it has human implications if we don't try to do more, so.
I might just add one more comment, Supervisor, that is, we will take a look at the background check aspects of this that you brought up, and the speaker brought up as well. I know they're there. Worth looking at, absolutely.
Okay.
It's more than worth looking at. We had one of these cases where it was clear that an IHSS worker was involved in neglect, but it wasn't something we could criminally prosecute. Our elder abuse prosecutor contacted IHSS and said, hey, this person is concerning. We want to make sure she's not still a care provider. And we're told that there's nothing they can do without a specific criminal conviction or finding a financial fraud. They're not excluded from being a provider. So even if we have seen and documented history where the person has been involved in a case of neglect or abuse, without a formal criminal conviction, they're going to be able to continue to be an IHSS provider. There needs to be more discretion in IHSS in not only limiting who is, you could have a violent criminal history, but as long as it's not related to elder or finance, you can be an IHSS provider. So I feel like there needs to be more discretion to limit who is capable, not experiencing current mental health or substance abuse issues, and does not have a violent criminal history, or a history of abuse or neglect in providing care for elders. And all of those components should be something that are examined before someone is anointed, the caregiver, at county expense to provide care.
Well, right, because we basically give the, I guess, the blanket approval--
Right.
--that this person's trustworthy, to the degree that they haven't gone as far as you've just described, but they're paid with public dollars. It's all of our tax dollars that are paying, but in many ca, you know, in the overwhelming, you know, number of cases, people are getting care in an independent setting that's, you know, good, allows them to have dignity for all their many years of their life. But in these cases, and ones that obviously aren't in this report, you know, and maybe a small fraction, but, you know, it's, you know, it's graphic and it's inhumane. I'll just say that. I mean, it is, you know, and to the point of people maybe dying at the hands of others. And then the one person makes a comment that, well, I didn't turn the person's conditions and didn't take them to the hospital because I was worried about the paycheck. It's like, what?
It's not uncommon. It's because that is there, so that, which is why that's one of the warning signs, is if there is a care provider who's financially dependent on the elder, they have a motive not to seek assistance if it's going to potentially lead to the elder being put into a rehabilitation facility, or some other kind of skilled nursing facility where they need more care, and then those dollars stop. And if that's the only income source, that's a dynamic that is going to inure to the benefit of the provider and not the elder.
Yeah. Supervisor Serna, thanks, Dawn.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you for your presentation. I'm looking forward to hearing more from you, but I think the discussion is a good one. Question for Bruce. Remind me, Bruce, we have IHSS eligibility workers, correct?
Yes, sir.
So their responsibility is what? To go to a household that's interested in having the service? And the eligibility worker presumably, what they do comes from state statute in terms of--
Correct.
--how they determine--
Right.
--yes or no on the ability to provide the service. Is there anything in state law that we know of that prohibits a county from augmenting the eligibility protocols to, for instance, also look at the mental acuity of the individual who would be receiving the care, and presumably has a say in whether they like, you know, a potential service provider or not? Because what I'm reading in some of these instances, maybe many of them, is that you have someone that's elderly that needs the care, but perhaps lacks the cognitive ability to make a, you know, an informed decision about the quality of the care that they would receive. So my question, again, is, is there anything that keeps us from maybe looking at those protocols to augment on occasion the, not just the eligibility determination, all the boxes that need to be checked, per se, but also having maybe a, you know, county psychiatrist or psychologist perhaps provide some kind of additional assessment so that we know that the person that needs the care can participate in determining who provides it?
It's a great question. I don't know the answer to that. I'm going to ask Michelle to weigh in on that, whether or not, Michelle, we're precluded from supplementing those eligibility criteria. Could you speak to that?
So I would need to follow up on whether we can enhance it. I think, I think you all remember that it is an eligibility program with some pretty, you know, finite areas for us to address. But I will definitely follow up. My understanding is that when the IHSS eligibility workers go out, they assess, you know, the needs of the individual, of the recipient, to determine the number of hours that they will receive. They also do an assessment as to their memory orientation, their judgment, so kind of a soft cognitive assessment, if you will, just to determine where they are in that area. But again, I can follow up.
You know, Supervisor, I just might add that if we find in our follow-up that there's some kind of statutory issue that might get in our way, that might be something we want to look at, was our delegation to see what we can do with that. Typically, typically with state programs, if you want to add to the eligibility criteria, there's usually some room to do that, but we'll have to explore it, as Michelle said.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. You know, I think, too, we have to remember that even, even though someone who is seeking IHSS care for the first time may present differently in a number of years afterwards in terms of their cognitive ability. And I know, I know, I think it's mentioned here, that the only requirement is for IHSS to come out once a year to, I guess, reassess things. But maybe there's something we could affect, whether it's, you know, changing state law with regards to how to assess the mental acuity of someone, to include more frequent assessments or something like that, once it becomes clear someone's having problems with memory, or, you know, recognizing folks, that kind of thing. It seems to me that there's too much, there are too many common denominators with this report around those instances where there's questionable abuse or neglect, and the fact that the person, you know, receiving the care perhaps wasn't 100% able to, to make that decision for himself or herself about who provides that care.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Frost.
Hey, Chair. I apologize for being late, so if I repeat something that's been said, it's probably worth repeating anyway. The, first of all, I share all of the concerns that have been, and the ideas that have been spoken up here today. You know, I recently met with a bunch of, and forgive me if I slip into IHSS, I do that all the time, with a bunch of IHHS workers, recently, as did Mr. Serna. And, you know, some of the concerns that were shared with me were really shocking to me, and not necessarily on the, not the county, but from the statewide level. And that was, as has been alluded to, the level of training. I mean, things as simple as the ability to give an injection. You know, as somebody who raised a diabetic daughter, I was very well-trained in how to give injections several times a day, and these folks, a lot of them were complaining and saying, you know, we've never been told how to do that. And that's so basic, and shows a real flaw. And again, I'm not pointing the fingers at our staff, but it's a flaw in the system. So I do think that we need to look very closely and scrutinize where our holes are, and if it is a question of going to the state and, you know, asking for further training dollars, and it should come with dollars, by the way, and requirements, then, you know, I think we need to uncover those stones.
You know, Supervisor, I just might add that my experience, the focus at the state level has, I think, been more focused on IHSS fraud and things like that, which is not unimportant, believe me, that's not unimportant, but less so on the kinds of issues that you're raising, quite frankly. So it's worth a discussion, an aggressive discussion, to see what we can do about that.
Good. Thanks, Patrick.
Agreed, so you've, oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, Don.
That's okay.
Supervisor Frost.
I just wanted to just add briefly that in-home care is probably one of the most challenging things to do, spoken by someone who took care of both of my moms till they died, and who has been exposed to that 24-hour-a-day personal care, where you're, you're taking care of the mind and the body and the spirit. And it's a heavy lift for people who don't really make a ton of money, and may not have the opportunity for the training. So I think the idea of, you know, training and then making sure that we're not only evaluating the in-home care provider, but the individual who's being cared for, you know, some, like if someone has dementia, they may have periods of extreme anger, or, you know, they have, they have challenges themselves that are really hard to deal with. And so making sure that, I don't know, I don't know if there's a screening process, I mean, I'm assuming we're screening the person being cared for so we know it takes someone who can manage, we're giving them the heads up on what they're walking into and what could happen. But I like the idea of more training, and maybe even some incentives. If they get more training, they get a little bonus or something. It might improve the care that we're giving in Sacramento County.
Thanks, Supervisor Frost. Okay, Dawn, thanks.
So I think we've all talked about and identified the issues with the IHSS providers, and it is not only an assessment of the elder who's needing the care, and their ability to choose, and if there's any undue influence on that choice, and then also the training and capacity of the person providing the care. So it's kind of a twofold we need to focus on, and I think we've explored that here, but it is, as we saw in this report, a critical need. Also, with respect to not just home service providers, but individuals who are not maintaining their medical care, we saw some situations where there were elders who clearly had a myriad of health issues, who had not been to a medical facility in a year, sometimes longer. So I don't know if there can be requirements added that there is a regular checkup or a regular doctor visit, so that we know that a medical professional is seeing the elder in addition to the care providers, so that we have a better idea of what's happening. We had one case where medication just was stopped, the son just decided to stop giving it. We have other cases where the person just had not seen a doctor, and so we don't know how long the issues of neglect were going on. So that's the, that's what can happen when elders are isolated, when they're not having contact with anyone outside the home. So the more that we can encourage people in the public and people in the professions that have contact with older folks to make sure that they reach out to them, and make sure that they're getting regular medical care, having access to mental health services on both sides, respite care for care providers, making sure that senior centers are open, daycare centers help provide relief to the care provider, and also exposure of the elder to other people, that they may be able to develop trust and talk about if there is abuse or neglect going on at the home. These are all ways that we can perhaps intervene in these situations in the future. We also had difficulty, we've had a transition in coroner's office, parties who are participating in EIDR, and there have been, and I was new to the team for this report-- in Eder, and there have been, and I was new to the team for this report as well, Paul Dernberger was the bureau chief previously, and he literally left the day we shut down. So there wasn't a lot of transition going on. And there was some changes in the coroner's office as well, and so we're working together now to make sure that we're getting all the cases because we weren't seeing cases get referred to us, and our docket was shrinking, and we couldn't figure out why we weren't having new cases to talk about because we know there's elder deaths in the county happening. So we're working on, I'm meeting with the coroner's office and kind of talking about the intake forms and making sure that we get those cases to the team to talk about, and that also oftentimes helps identify cases that maybe didn't get to law enforcement properly, or where we can ask law enforcement to follow up on an investigation. And then at the same time, we're doing education and outreach to the law enforcement agencies to make sure that they're investigating these cases, and they're doing so properly and getting the cases to us. But without the referrals, we don't have the data to obtain the information with regard to what elder deaths have happened. I tried to get statistics from the coroner's office just so we could see a snapshot in Sacramento County during the relevant time period of natural deaths, accidental deaths in the county as a whole, and I haven't been able to get that data. So we're going to work together and see if, because I think that would be meaningful as well, to understand what percentage of our deaths are happening in each of these categories, not just from the Eder perspective, but in the county as a whole. So one of the recommendations and that we're already working on is to work more collaboratively with the coroner's office and law enforcement to make sure that these cases are getting referred the way that they should be, and that we're collecting the data that can help us in the future. We also want to reduce danger and prevention through education, and that's with respect to financial abuse and accidental deaths. We talked about water safety, fire safety, fall safety, both in facilities and in home environments, and those are topics that can always benefit from additional education of the public. So we will continue to work with our partners and hope to better address the issues of elder neglect and abuse in Sacramento. We want to protect our older population and, of course, make sure that we reduce the number of preventable deaths and avoid the kind of scenarios that you saw in these summaries. I know they're heartbreaking, and some of them are horrifying. One of the other issues, and I'm not sure, this is a statutory thing, we think we've decided, but there were a few cases we've seen where the caregiver kept the elder at home after they were deceased.
Body was there for months, weeks and months.
Weeks and months. And there's really not a crime committed. So there's not a timeframe with which you have to report death under those circumstances. So we're trying to figure out where the lapse is in that requirement to make sure that we don't have a loss of evidence and information, or that an elder is sitting home decomposing, and we have no way to find out how it is that they died and whether it was by natural causes or some other means. So that was another issue that we were surprised to see in our review of the cases. Are there any other questions?
Okay. Well, thank you, Dawn. Let me see if there's any other questions at this juncture. I know we kind of punctuated throughout your presentation, so if you want to stand by, and then I think Michelle may want to offer some additional, and there may be some more questions. So again, thanks to the team, and I think it's really important, just as you noted, to be sure that there's continuity when it comes to, you know, turnover, longtime, you know, involvement by certain staff members that have, you know, headed up the effort, and then kind of something gets lost in transition. Obviously, COVID had some impact, probably the handoff in your offices, but I think it's really important. This, this effort has been ongoing, and nothing else, it gives us this forum certainly to talk about, you know, you know, what has happened, what reviews, reviews have shown, and certainly where we can stand to make changes that hopefully impact positively on people's lives, so.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great, thanks, Dawn. Okay, Bruce, I'm going to get Michelle on the phone.
Yeah. Michelle, if you could offer some final comments, please?
Yes, thank you. First of all, I just, I want to say thank you to Dawn and her team. As she said, she was kind of thrown into this just because of Paul's departure right at the pandemic, at the beginning of the pandemic, and I just really appreciate the efforts put into the discussions as well as to the report. And as she indicated, we'll be working together to just kind of strengthen the process so that it can, it can really be used to help inform improvement efforts. I am deeply grateful and appreciative of all the comments today and of Dawn and her team and the overall interest in promoting the safety, health, and well-being of our older adults and our dependent adults. So I'll just say a couple of things. Bruce mentioned that there, we are requesting additional positions for APS. As, as you know, the age for which APS will go out and investigate abuse and neglect is 60 now instead of 65. So you will see in the budget a request for positions that will strengthen our operations as well as allow us the ability to provide case management services where we may be able to attend to some more issues. We are also asking for additional IHSS positions, and that is such a complicated program, and I hate to throw this out there, but I might, I might just throw out that at some point we might want to have an IHSS workshop because there are so many moving parts. I will say that for the IHSS care providers, the California Department of Social Services has developed a care provider training that's expected to roll out in the fall. I haven't seen the curriculum, so I can't speak to what's in it, but I will certainly follow up to get a little bit more information on it. And then, and then the other piece that, that has been mentioned, and it is a frustration for me as well, is that, that sometimes there are, there is abuse in the home, and the older adults don't want to prosecute because oftentimes it is a family member. And it is interesting with just the similar dynamics with kids and child abuse, where they don't want their parents to get in trouble. The difference is, even when we know there's an older adult being abused or neglected, we do not have the authority to remove them because they're an adult. And so we, we do everything we can to, to help address safety and, and well-being, but it is definitely a challenging situation. And then, and just the follow-up area is that, that I will go into is looking at the actual training currently provided for providers as well as family members. As the discussions have noted, there are family members who have been abusive, and what is really difficult and challenging with this program is that the recipient is the employer, and they have the right to hire or fire the providers, the care providers. They also have the ability to waive some of the crimes that preclude a provider from being a care provider. So I, you know, definitely there are some areas where it, I think it would be legislative fixes, but certainly areas where the, the entire program can be strengthened because with our aging population, we know that it will continue growing. Thanks.
Thank you, Michelle. Let me go to board members. Any other thoughts or questions? One thing comes to my mind, I think that as a result of this, you know, the report, some of the things we talked about, certainly you've heard expressions of concern and some suggestions and questions from board members, I think maybe as a follow-on, we ought to have a summary of maybe some actionable items that either could, you know, certainly tie in with our budget discussions around programmatic elements and certainly support in that way, but also we've talked about state licensing, we've talked about training, we've talked about other ways to intervene and some of the considerations. So Bruce, not to task you or anyone else, but I think oftentimes we have these discussions, and then, you know, it's, it's fruitful to the degree that there's some follow-up, but I do think maybe as a, as a matter of course here, that if that summary could be, you know, prepared by you or somebody under your authorities, or maybe Michelle's authorities, and then keep this board posted on, you know, where we can weigh in. If it's a legislative approach, then certainly that would come to us in one context. If it's a budget issue, whether it's recommended or not, that's another, if it's state licensing, if it's training, again, there's multiple fronts here, and so without burdening you or anybody else with more work, I think that if we kind of coalesce this, certainly in light of the seriousness of, you know, the way this report's presented and, and take into account, that would be helpful, so I don't know if any.
Good suggestion, Mr. Chairman. We'll do that, definitely. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Very good. Okay, any other member of the board then? If not, then thank you, Dawn, thank you, Michelle, Bruce, all the folks that have worked on this, and as gruesome as it may be, I think it certainly provides a good foundation to continue to try to do our best to help those that are most vulnerable in our community. So thanks again.
Supervisor Nativi, I just wanted to put on the record that there were no public comments for this item.
Okay, good. I was just going to ask you, so you got ahead of me. Thank you. Okay, with that then, this is a receiving file, and we will then go to our next item, item 64, which is a group gun violence workshop. So I don't know if you want to call the item, Madam Chair, Clerk?
Sure. Gun violence workshop.
Very good. And Mr. Jones is lead on this.
I'm going to start, start with a sad irony.
Yes, Supervisor, I'll be discussing that too.
Yes.
So Anne, did you have any beginning to the? Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Nativi, Board Supervisors. I'm Eric Jones, the Deputy County Executive for Public Safety and Justice, and I wanted to acknowledge our own tragedy we had here just downtown, and I'll be discussing a lot of the dynamics around that sort of absolutely horrible tragedy. And this is a challenging but necessary conversation about gun violence. And there is an increase in gun violence nationally on, on many fronts, and I believe what Supervisor Serna was discussing is the absolute horrible school shooting with mass fatalities in Texas just today, so.
Fifteen, fifteen people died.
Yes.
Fourteen kids and a teacher.
Oh, my gosh.
In west of San Antonio.
Yes, so those types of shootings are absolutely on the increase, and those are typically sole assailant, sometimes what is known as a lone wolf, active shooter type situation, that we could spend a whole entire workshop, workshop on, on just that. And certainly very, very sad day, and ironic that that's, you know, what we're discussing today is gun violence. But I do want to note that today's presentation is specifically around, I'll answer any questions, of course, that we want to talk about gun violence, but this presentation is specifically around group gun violence, also known as gang gun violence. And I'll talk a little bit about what the research shows out there, but also I want to acknowledge a lot of really good work that's going on within the various cities, within the county, as well as the various county organizations. And there are experts that I've worked with, not just here, but elsewhere, based on a citywide basis, countywide basis, statewide, as well as nationally. And these experts are practitioners, and you have a lot of them right here, and we do in Sacramento County, as well as academic researchers. And I believe what is worthwhile is a blend of both, where we have practitioners as well as academics tackling the problem, and I think the key for the group gun violence is going to be around a regional approach, so there's not one agency tackling this problem. And again, there's a lot of regional work going on right now. So again, today's presentation is around group gun violence. Before I get into the presentation, I wanted to ask if there are any questions about the other incident that was mentioned or that type of gun violence.
Any questions? Not at this juncture. Thanks, Eric.
Yeah. Sad day, for sure. So we have been seeing increases in gun violence locally as well as regionally, and so when we talk about gun violence, often there are two metrics, which are homicides as well as non-fatal shootings. And I think it's important homicides get a lot of the key news media, but also important is to examine non-fatal shootings because we believe that's probably the better metric as to how much gun violence is, is going on. And then definitions of, so I think it's important that we talk about the, the problem, the scope of the problem, as well as definitions, so we're all on the same page. So when we talk about violent crime, it, clearly it's not exclusively a law enforcement issue, and we need community and other partners as well. And again, this is because gun violence is so high, and if we talk nationally, over 20,000 gun deaths took place across the country, and that excludes suicide. Okay, it does not even count suicide in 2021, and also 2020 was the highest US firearms homicide rate in 25 years, and we don't see many changes in the country lowering that When we talk about gun crimes, defining what that is, it's either guns being used illegally or illegal possession. So that could be a person who is prohibited from having a firearm, or it could be an illegal firearm that's illegal to own, and we're seeing there is a propensity to, a higher propensity to use and carry firearms than we've seen before. When it comes to, comes to the causes of the increase in shootings nationally, there is no consensus among experts. There are various theories such as COVID and post-COVID behaviors. Lead sociologists and criminologists cite things such as increased overall criminal activity, community tensions, reduced enforcement in some cases, reduced support and services, economic desperation, and drug and gang connections with a lot of the various gangs and groups that we've been seeing. But again, there is no clear actual consensus among the experts. There has been a change in group and gang dynamics. So the reason you, you might be wondering, why are we saying group gun violence? Why aren't we saying gang violence? Well, the gang members don't call themselves gangs in all cases. Sometimes they'll use terms as sets, cliques, crews, they don't want to identify themselves as gangs. Might it be to avoid gang enhancements and criminal charges, or might it just be the dynamics are changing is, is fairly unclear. We're also seeing there's an increased involvement in drug and human trafficking with these groups that are the most violent. Territory is less important than it was over, let's say, the past couple decades. It used to be perhaps that this gang is from, or group is from this area of town, and this one is in this area of town. They're very, they move across territories, and it really doesn't matter anymore. And social media has very clearly changed things, and we've seen that in recent cases, very highly publicized here, where gangs or groups will call out the other one and even give their location as to where they're going to be. That is a completely new dynamic than, than what was seen in law enforcement in years Another thing that we know is that those who are active in the group gun violence, they are equally at risk of being shot and equally at risk of shooting someone. So it, it sort of depends on the situation or the day, so they're equally at risk of each. And another thing we know is that the percentage actively involved in this type of, these type of violent groups is a very, very less than 1%. It's a very small percentage of our overall population, which gives us some hope that data-driven strategies can help us focus on the very active groups. There are some evidence-based and promising practice models out there. So first, most of them are called violence reduction initiatives or community violence intervention. And the primary known aspects, I'm going to show in a, in a moment, but they're also, from jurisdiction to jurisdiction, there are various blends or hybrids of a variety of these evidence-based practices out there. And oftentimes, a custom fit for a particular community makes the most sense as long as they follow the principles of a lot of these evidence-based practices. So first off, we have what is known as focus deterrents. Now, it is much more complicated than what you're seeing on the screen here, but these are just sort of some key components as to what experts believe makes them successful. So this is an, it's analysis-driven, and of course, collaboration with the community. We often hear what's known as a public health approach, which has a focus on risks and needs. One really successful component of a public health approach is a hospital-based intervention, which means you may have a victim of a shooting who is hospitalized, family, friends are there, tensions are high, oftentimes there's a discussion going on about retaliation. So to get an outreach worker, or what can be known as a violence interrupter, there to deal with it immediately appears to really have success. And typically, okay, so then there's a comprehensive And typically, okay, so then there's a comprehensive gang models, which leverages opportunities. What that means is these folks who are most at risk of being shot or shooting someone, really having community-based organizations leverage opportunities for these individuals to get them out of the lifestyle that they are in. And then there's what's known as violent crime reduction operations, which, again, relies on analytics, very strong emphasis on partnerships, but also recognizes or believes that there has to be enforcement also, and, but it needs to be a strategic enforcement. So we'll get into a synthesis of all of that research in a moment. It won't take long. But first, I think this quote from Harvard Kennedy School of Government is very important, because it states that "in order to control violence, one must account for it directly by focusing on the small numbers of places, people, and behaviors that disproportionately drive the problem." What that means is there has to be a focus on hot people and hot places together. So we've got active groups and some active locations, and that there needs to be a very strategic approach to both. The researchers also believe that there should not be a rush method, where jurisdiction just suddenly puts together a strategy to be very quick and to make a quick show. It's important to be swift in many cases, but again, it just must be strategic. And it has to go beyond just individual agencies, individual organizations, individual programs. It really has to be a thread through infrastructure. So what, of all of the bodies of research out there, and there are a lot, from U.S. Bureau of Justice Assistance, National Institute of Justice, universities, many, many bodies of literature. Actually, the Urban Institute did a literature synthesis. So it was the first ever that we are aware of, where they looked at all of the various models that we just saw up there, and they really synthesized and extracted what made each of those models work. So where there was, say, focused deterrence, where there was a public health approach, when it was successful, what components made it successful. So here, we're gonna go over those themes to see exactly that. So first, community engagement partnerships. So we know if it's just enforcement, may come off as a sort of occupying force in a community. If we're not engaging the community, who know the community better than us oftentimes, it's not gonna be as successful. Next, we're community trust-building efforts, clearly. And it's not just trust between police and community. It's really trust between government and community, and trust between organizations and community. Also, what showed results was the problem analysis. So it was a deeper dive than just looking into reports and police reports. It was really doing analytics and having analysts assigned to the work to really do what's called a network analysis, which would, if we were to put a network analysis on, say, one group that is very active, it would look like a galaxy of connected dots. But the analytics tell you who is the most active, and it's sort of predictive analytics, who is the most, again, at risk of carrying a gun and committing a gun crime. Not everybody in a gang is doing gun crime. Really need to focus first on the small percentage who are. And another interesting dynamic with groups, gangs today, is that sometimes there are what we call sets or subsets of the same gang. And sometimes those subsets will be in conflict with each other, which is a relatively newer gang dynamic than we have seen in prior years. Again, it's about data. You'll see this word, scorecards. What happens where this type of work is successful is various agencies will get together on a very regular basis with analysts, and they will examine all of the shootings, and they'll do actually daily shooting reviews and weekly shooting reviews, and whether someone's shot or not. And so then individuals and groups will be scored in a mathematical formula to tell the enforcement team, as well as the community outreach team, which groups are the hottest right now, because it has to be very swift and very nimble.
So Eric, give us an example of a community nearby where that's being done. Do you know?
You know, there was a pilot program done here in Sacramento a number of years ago, where they did it in a South Sacramento area for a couple years, and it was successful. They partnered with a group Stockton has partnered with and continues to, which is California Partnership for Safe Communities, Oakland, Fresno. There are a fair amount of communities who are using this work that you're seeing up here.
And then how do they measure success in reduction in shootings, reduction in number of homicides, reduction in guns on the street? How are they able to measure what's successful or not?
The two primary metrics are homicide, gun homicides and non-fatal shootings. But I should back up. It's group or gun-related homicides or non-fatal shootings. So there may be domestic cases or others that are still horrible. But when it comes to the specific gang-related reduction strategy, those are really the two metrics that drive it. Some jurisdictions have attempted to use amount of guys at risk getting jobs, which is important. You know, there's a lot of different metrics for a lot of the outreach work. But really, the primary goal here, and you'll see in a moment, singular message in communication is important between law enforcement, community-based organizations, DA, probation, federal partners, is that the gun violence needs to stop. The message needs to be focused and narrow. And then potential great byproducts might otherwise come out of it as well. Increased guys getting out of the gang lifestyle altogether, getting jobs, maybe getting housing if they don't have it. Those are great things too, but number one is reducing shootings.
Okay, thanks. Supervisor Frost, you had a question?
I just wanted to ask, so I wasn't sure I understood. Did you say we do know the hot places at any given time? Do we know in Sacramento County these hot areas?
Yes, the Sheriff's Office and City of Sacramento. In fact, we had a meeting, a regional meeting just yesterday. And there were representatives of all of the police departments in the county, as well as Sheriff's Office, District Attorney's Office. And each jurisdiction is, I think, is doing a pretty good job of knowing where the hot spots are. But one thing about analytics is those hot spots change regularly. And I think the key is being swift enough in a real-time, near-real-time capacity to be able to respond quickly. For example, a new group conflict may arise, possibly out of a social media posting, is an example, which is not, it's a normal occurrence, unfortunately. And then that group will flare up, this group will flare up, and suddenly, you can't wait for the next week to have a meeting to find out where the new hot spots really active right now. But yes, my understanding is that the jurisdictions here, with the Sheriff's Office, probation, work well together to understand who are the most active and where are they the most active.
And the other thing I wanted to ask you is what can govern, what does that mean, building government trust? What does that look like? What would we, what could we do to build that trust with those groups?
I believe the first part is the frontline law enforcement, because they are typically those most active out pulling cars over, you know, trying to do proactive and preventative enforcement. But it also relates to probation, District Attorney's Office, most components of the criminal justice system. But I've also found that the same applies even for social services components, community-based organizations. It takes a while to build trust in, I should say, systems.
It's like a relationship or communications?
It is. So once relationships are built over time, then communication improves. And the best example I can give of how trust relates to gun crime is, let's say there's a community where it could be social services going in or law enforcement going in, but there's an unwillingness to want to give us information, systems information. And when there's that lack of trust, we don't really know what's really going on in a neighborhood. We want everyone to feel comfortable working with us, and that's where the trust piece comes in.
Thank you.
Thanks, Eric.
And I think it's worth now discussing the difference between prevention versus intervention. Both are extremely important, and both can be and should be on parallel tracks. Prevention is really, is much larger in scope, and it's really about keeping youth out of gangs, keeping youth or young adults from getting guns in their hands. And there are a lot of great organizations doing that work. Intervention really applies to those individuals that are out there already with gun in hand and already are in some sort of conflict right now. And so prevention is not necessarily the right tool for that group. And you'll see later, we're gonna talk about violence interrupters, or also known as peacekeepers. They're essentially outreach workers who have typically been in this lifestyle before and are more credible, and are out now and want to make a difference, and are more credible messengers than perhaps me or somebody else from another organization. So a lot of these focused deterrence and other strategies you saw a moment ago, they very much focus on intervention. It's very acute, it's very laser-focused on those individuals that are the most at risk of being shot or shooting someone. And again, it doesn't take away from prevention. There's just a belief that there are organizations that are great at each, and they should work together, but also remain focused in either prevention or intervention. It's really, we can look at it as they are separate service pathways. And again, some organizations are excellent at each. I already mentioned the need for rapid course adjustment, critical because these flare-ups can happen literally overnight. And then there could be three or four retaliatory shootings across the jurisdiction, and there has to be a need for immediate rapid course adjustment. Enforcement, necessary, but it needs to be precisely focused. By that, it shouldn't just be broad-based blanket enforcement in a community, because that can have the effect of creating a further barrier of that trust between that community and law enforcement or the other groups involved in this work. So the enforcement needs to be very precisely focused on the components we've talked about. And I also want to mention, this is not, sometimes there is a myth that this is soft on crime. It is absolutely not soft on crime, because we're talking about this very, very serious gun violence. It's just focused and strategic. And clearly cross-coordination between not just law enforcement, not just the criminal justice system, but all of the community partners as well, clergy, nonprofit organizations. They all have, what you've heard me say before, is shared public safety. It has to be a shared approach, where we're not looking to just one agency or one organization to focus on this very important issue. And I already mentioned the singular message that clergy should have, community-based organizations, law enforcement, is that the gun violence simply must stop. And we want these guys, they're typically men, 18 to 24. We want them to get services. But the message also has to be, but if you continue to use a gun illegally, we have to have swift but certain, but fair enforcement. And that's another thing, what I think what the data shows us, is that oftentimes there's a belief that the group gun violence are youth. And sometimes it is. But really, what the data typically shows is we're talking between 18 to mid-20s, or usually in the mid-20s to higher 20s, that are the most actively engaged in the gang violence. So last, oh, these are the outreach workers that I mentioned before. So these are the themes of what, the Urban Institute was the one entity that just recently published the handbook for dealing with group gun violence. I was fortunate enough to be a subject matter expert for it. And, but they examine cities all across the country on what they felt worked and what maybe didn't work. And it does require what is known as program fidelity. So you can't just have a program or a project or somebody assigned. It's a lot of work, and it has to be working together.
Eric, just pause for a second. Supervisor Frost?
Eric, before you move on, I wanted to ask you. You said it wasn't territorial, and they don't identify as gangs. In my time, we had the Crips and the Bloods, and, you know, we, you could see them coming. What identifies them then? Do we know, can you tell by looking at them? Or do they look alike in some way? Or do they wear a ring? Or, you know?
Yes, Supervisor Frost, that's a good question. It changes, and it depends. So not all groups behave this way. But oftentimes, it used to be that Crips and Bloods had very clear territory, and also Crips wore blue and Bloods wore red, as well as the Norteño and Cereno. Norteño wore red and Cereno wore blue. That is, I'll just say that's much less common, because, for a couple reasons. But one in particular, a trend, again, across the country, is that they don't want to be so easily identified, especially by law enforcement. There are sometimes tattoos and other things, but again, it evolves over time.
Got it. Thank you.
You're welcome. So really, next steps, so again, this was a presentation, a workshop today. Already, the, when I say city, right now, we're beginning with Sacramento, the City of Sacramento. But also, just as recent as yesterday, have had discussions with all of the area cities as well. And there's some interest in working even closer together, even more intense sharing of information with each other, because I mentioned the agencies are doing some great work. But it's really working together in perhaps more of a countywide approach. But again, we're already going on the District Attorney's Youth Prevention Gun Violence Information Program. The Sheriff's Office and Police Department are working together on enforcement and on task forces with our federal partners. And the federal piece is very important as well, because there has to be, and our U.S. Attorney for the Eastern District here, Phil Talbert, is very committed to this type of gun violence intervention work. And they are willing to work with us on federal charges when they make the most sense, because that is a bigger deterrent for a lot of the groups, because they realize they're going to do 80% of the time, and the time will be perhaps not even in this part of the country. And so it's a very effective enforcement tool to have the federal partnership as well.
Eric, if you could, we have several supervisors that want to weigh in. Supervisor Frost, Supervisor Desmond, Supervisor Kennedy?
I think the weight of most of the issues are in the Sacramento city and downtown areas. But when you said yesterday you were in contact with all the, you meant all the cities and jurisdictions, all the police in, are in the conversation then, already?
That is correct.
Citrus Heights and Folsom and the outlying suburbs, even though they're not quite as concerning. I know, I get that.
But that is correct, and I really give credit to Chief Lester from City of Sacramento, pulled that meeting together.
Oh, that was nice.
Yes, and it was sharing potential strategies that we could work with in a county together. And, you know, since that tragedy downtown, shootings have, group shootings have reduced. And so using that momentum to examine what perhaps is causing that reduction. Sometimes we don't, sometimes we don't know all of the components to reductions. However, I was impressed with putting a meeting together that quick to share ideas around a regional approach, and that was a common theme, a regional approach. How can we work together?
They work together with SWAT and other areas, bombs and other areas, so it makes sense. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Eric, for the presentations. It's a pretty heavy day of presentations, and I know that it sounds like we probably need another presentation at some point about other, you know, mash other, you know, mass shooting incidents like the one that happened in Texas today. And there are some similarities, but obviously a lot of differences, a lot of mental health issues and other things that we could get into. But in terms of this, I appreciate the presentation today, and looking forward to having a more of a discussion about the next steps among my colleagues up here. But I went to a, I think I may have mentioned this to you, the head of security at Ardenfer Mall is actually a retired CHP chief, he was my boss at one time, but he's worked very hard to create a collaborative effort between brother to brother and advance peace, the Sheriff's Department, Police Department, on a model that's really worked, I think has been successful at Ardenfer Mall in terms of, I guess that would be more of the intervention, is that, would that be, or would that be a combination of both, what they do? They rely on these organizations who have already pre-existing relationships with a lot of the young people and young adults to be more aware of when a violent crime might happen, a gun-related crime could happen, and certainly, so to prevent it, and then intervene if one does happen.
Yes, Supervisor, and I'll actually go ahead and throw the rest of these out, just so I miss them all.
Okay, I'm sorry.
No, 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 that's okay. So, that's the advantage of having everything on one slide all at once. But that is really intervention, scientifically speaking. I mean, you want to prevent the next shooting, but it's through those intervention efforts where we're worried about the individuals who are carrying guns right now and might come into conflict with another opposing group and a shooting will occur. So, that type of work is exactly what we're talking about.
Okay, great. And it seems to be effective, and my takeaway from some of those meetings was that the city of Sacramento, I mean, certainly the Police Department and the Sheriff's Department were involved with some of these community-based organizations that are doing really great work. But it seemed to me the city was a little more involved in these efforts directly, and the county needs to be doing more. That's why I really appreciate, you know, this discussion today, and we'll look forward to some of your recommendations, so.
Yes, thank you, Supervisor Desmond. And those organizations, there are many others that are doing the good work out there, and some of them, again, specialize in prevention, and some of them specialize in intervention, and both, both are very much needed. And so, I believe, oh, yes, sir.
I was gonna say, we still have Supervisor, oh, go ahead and finish it, Supervisor Kennedy, keep, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you, Chair. So, our belief is that a problem analysis should occur, which is a deep dive into the data of all of the agencies that were just mentioned. And that can be done with, if the board is interested, we can begin a problem analysis with experts of a third-party status, for example, the California Partnership for Safe Communities. This is the work they do, and they do problem analysis that really gives you an idea as to what age group are we talking, what demographic. We all have an idea, and each department has an idea as to already who's committing this type of crime, but it's doing those predictive analytics that really, really go into a deep dive scope into what is driving the gun crime in this region. And actively getting even more community engagement and partnerships. And then this could result in these multi-jurisdictional meetings and coordination. So, already, I have the, each of these agencies you see here have already expressed interest in doing this type of work. So, you've got this California State Department of Justice, also a critical partner. They have a very, they have analysts that can help with projects like this and are willing. And then all of our, you have our county component there. I've spoken with the Office of Violence Prevention for the city, as well as the Police Department, Chief Lester. Again, this is the work they're doing, it's just really bringing a bit of a more regional approach to the work.
Okay. Supervisor Kennedy and Supervisor Serna, thanks, Eric.
Thank you, Chair. This is great work, thank you. I like all of the talk of, you know, working together. This is a hugely siloed area, and everybody claims to have different expertise and all that, but we need to get over it, check the egos at the door and get the work done. So, I see that in your slides, and I appreciate that. One in particular, you know, and you're right, you know, this isn't anti-law enforcement by any means. It's a tool to help law enforcement, but mostly to serve the community. You know, Supervisor Desmond and I had an opportunity to meet over at Sierra Health Foundation with the Trauma-Informed Wellness Program. Again, like you said, there's a lot of different programs, but one of the things that was great about this program, and I'm sure you're aware of it, but I want to say it again, is that it drew from a variety of different organizations. And as I said earlier, the ego checked at the door, I saw that happen. Each, you had North Sacramento there, you had South Sacramento there, you had the eastern part of the county. Everybody was represented geographically, but also with expertise in different gangs, different groups. They know their community, as you said, better than we probably do, and particularly youth. They're well-trained, they could use resources. But, as I said, I know that's not the only group, but it was one that I hope we reach out to, because it was very broad-based and coming from a good place and has a record of success. So, I hope that we will draw upon their knowledge of the community and their experience that they've had, both lived and learned, and engage them in this conversation as well.
Thanks, Supervisor. Good, thanks, Patrick. Phil?
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation, Eric. I think much of what you communicated this afternoon, as far as your research slide, which gives us the list of themes in terms of, you know, how we go about affecting change when it comes to gun violence in our community, I think functions as a great segue into the next presentation we're going to hear about, in terms of the successes that the Black Child Legacy Campaign continues to have, in terms of the mission of that initiative. So, it's not lost on me that many of the things you've mentioned here today is specific to interrupting gun violence trends, like making sure that you have the right messengers engaged, like, you know, relying heavily on data, and also looking at people that, in communities, that know the, you know, know the problem the best, being the ones to intervene and help prevent gun violence. Makes a lot of sense, not just from the standpoint of gun violence, but also when it comes to the disparities that we see in certain populations. I guess the one question I have is, I kind of hearken back to when I was, when I was younger, there was a program called Scared Straight that you're probably very familiar with. And, you know, that was, the fulcrum of that program, if I recall correctly, was, you know, taking young people, mostly young men, who had histories of criminal behavior, not just gun violence, but exposing them to what it's like to be in prison, and to hear directly from those that didn't have the benefit of working with interventionists to put them on the right track and consequently became prisoners. And those were some, I remember those videos being very shocking, just to watch from the outside in. Is there any, is there any efficacy that you know of that comes from programs like that, that really try to impress upon kind of the younger minds of what, you know, trying to really link the consequences you can expect with the behaviors that you're engaged with today?
Yes, Supervisor Serna. So, that's actually, Scared Straight is one of the most studied, and I do have to tell you, it was one of the few programs that had a negative outcome, and actually increased violence, which is, so, because of the manner of it. You mentioned linking consequences, that part is good, but it's done in a different way. There are about 15 or so other types of programs to deal with youth who are at risk, to, again, link them to consequences and to understand them. But that is one program that they actually found had a reverse outcome interesting.
What about positive, positively themed
Yes.
...programs that are, that hinge on consequence? So, for instance, instead of exposing folks to, you know, here's the life of incarceration you can expect, maybe looking at it from the standpoint of, here's a life you can expect if you stay in school, you excel at your studies, you, you know, you're able to, you know, participate in athletics, or art, or, you know, the sciences, whatever it might be, but really kind of stress the positive, you know, activities that we, I think we probably know, both anecdotally and with probably plenty of data, really can affect and be, you know, life-changing elements to a young person's life that can, you know, steer them away from, you know, participating in gun violence.
Yes, the programs that seem to work the best have a balanced approach, which is to not shy away from the consequences, but to do it in a more positive or somewhat of a nurturing approach, meaning a lot of these individuals that we're talking about, youth, young adults, have not had that, and it's been lacking or missing in their lives. And so, the balanced approach, while not shying away from the negative consequences, has what's been proven to be most successful.
What do we know, Eric, today about the reasons, the main reasons why, especially in the quote-unquote gang context, that young people would kind of gravitate to normalizing gun violence? Is it economics? Is it, and when I say economics, is it, like, for instance, drug sales, narcotic sales? Or is it the sense of belonging, because they don't have that sense of belonging from what would otherwise be, you know, a strong family bond? Is there any data that, or research that you are, you know, familiar with that tells us, you know, what drives that 16-year-old to, you know, go buy that, you know, 9mm for protection, or is it, you know, is he buying it for the purpose of, you know, committing a, you know, a robbery?
One could say there's as many reasons as there are individuals that get engaged in it, but a lot of what is cited is that typically they are in an underserved impoverished neighborhood. Oftentimes, there is a lack of family support, so they attempt to find a sense of belonging some other way, which they find that in, say, a group or a gang. And then I've heard personally, because I've sat down with individuals in this lifestyle, and they often tell me the reason they carry a gun is for protection, because everyone else is carrying a gun, and they feel they have to carry it for their own protection. And there are a host of other reasons, but that's just sort of a small sample for you.
Okay. Last comment, I guess I have for you is, or suggestion is, that the, as we're going to hear, the successes of the Black Child Legacy Campaign and the Reducing African-American Child Death Initiative, I think in large part have been very successful when it comes to, I don't want to call it low-hanging fruit, because none of it is, but when it comes to the things that we can affect more directly, for instance, you know, infant, you know, sleep-related deaths or perinatal conditions. But the other two leading causes of death that are part of that initiative is reducing third-party homicides and child abuse neglect homicides in the African-American youth population. I would really encourage us not to lose sight of those two parts of the challenge, because those are, I suspect are going to be the ones that are going to be most challenging to reduce both the number of deaths and the disparity. So, I think whatever we decide that this county should or can be doing to lower gun violence, we actually already have, I think, a very strong construct to hone it in on that particular subpopulation that arguably, you know, is, you know, is more victim to gun violence than any other population. So, I would strongly encourage you, if you haven't already, to get very familiar with the challenge around those two leading causes of death, to do so.
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Eric, anything else you wanted to conclude with?
I think my conclusion, and then if CEO Edwards has anything, but if the board is interested, we can, at our level, begin working on a third-party problem analysis.
Okay. Anne, did you want to add anything?
That's exactly what I was going to add. That is how we would like to proceed with your support.
Do you need direction today? I mean, was, this was a...
It's not a vote, or, because we'll bring something back to you, but a few head nods, and I'm seeing them, so.
Mr. Chair, I'm glad to hear that, but I would like to also understand is that, at some point, we don't, and it's important to talk about, it's important to have conversations like this and to understand the challenges and, you know, what's in front of us in terms of perhaps even prospective policymaking in the future. But if we're going to go down this road, I want to know, I want to feel comfortable knowing that we're going to have the will, both from the executive, administrative side of things, as well as the board side of things, to apply resources, to budget around it, if it's necessary. I mean, we don't want to spend money for the sake of doing that alone, but I think there probably, at some point, depending on our interest, there will be a need for additional resources. So, I think that's a part of the commitment that we need to be honest with ourselves about, starting today.
Well, you have my commitment. I think this is a very critical and important issue, and I think it's really important that we do something.
Okay. Very good. Okay, well, with that, then, it sounds like you're going to, you know, kind of framed it here today, you'll be back to us, and I appreciate Supervisor Serna's comments. It goes to the heart of how we can actually accomplish some of this, and that is having the proper resources to do it with. Again, thank you, Eric, thanks, Anne. Before we leave this topic, I would just ask, maybe take just a brief moment of silence here in observance of the tragedy that occurred in Texas, and certainly our thoughts and prayers go out to the victims and to the families, so just a moment if we could. Okay, thank you very much. All right. With that, then, we'll move to our next item.
Do we have any public speakers?
Oh, I'm sorry. Do we have public speakers? I didn't.
We do not have any public speakers.
Very good. Okay, thanks for a reminder, though. Okay, with that, then, let's move to item 65, the last order of business for the day.
Yeah. Item 65 is the Fiscal Year's 2019, 20, and 2020, 21 Annual Report on the Black Child Legacy Campaign.
Okay. And we have a number of presenters here, I see some very familiar faces, and who's going to kick this off? Liz, you?
Hi, yes. Good afternoon, board members and Chair Natoli. I'm Melissa Lloyd, I'm the Child Protective Services Deputy Director. I'm presenting today on behalf of Michelle Callejas, who could not be here today with us, but is with us via phone, as is probation chief Marlon Yarber, and Department of Human Assistance Director Ethan Dye. I will cover the first portion of the presentation, and then we'll continue with Assistant Probation Division Chief Derek Caspier, who's here with us today. And then from there, our First Five Executive Director Julie Galalo will provide information on outcomes and data. I'd first like to start by acknowledging the Board of Supervisors, all of you, for supporting this effort. And I really need to specifically thank Supervisor Serna for your initial work and call to action establishing the Blue Ribbon Commission on Disproportionate African-American Child Deaths, the effort that later became the Black Child Legacy Campaign. Sacramento County Probation, Department of Human Assistance, First Five Sacramento, and the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services are active partners in the Black Child Legacy Campaign. We are all excited about our work in the community, and we're truly humbled to be a part of improving outcomes for Black and African-American children and their families. This excitement and commitment has extended throughout the departments from our staff from our staff on the front lines and beyond. And with that, I want to acknowledge the work of each department's leadership teams that are leading the efforts, starting with the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services, Kim Pearson, who's here with us today, who has been phenomenal in her leadership, both internally in our agency, as well as with our community partners, and folks from our CPS team, Tiffany Glass, Claudia Taylor, and Karen Parker. Additionally, from probation, of course, Chief Marlon Yarber, Shonda Cruz, who recently transferred over, and in her stead, we are now working with Lindsay Simone, and to round it out, Director Ethan Dye, and Stephanie Hopkins from Department of Human Assistance. You'll hear about the performance data a little later, but I do want to state how proud we are of the relationships that we've built with our partners and with the families we serve, and the partners at Sierra Health Foundation, the Community Incubator Leads, First Five Child Abuse Prevention Council, Department of Human Assistance, and probation, to make the systemic changes that promote better outcomes for our community. I'll now share more specifics on how county departments are contributing to the effort. Since 2015, DHA, probation, and DCFAS have co-located staff at each of the seven Community Incubator Lead sites. DHA provides eligibility specialists, CP, excuse me. CPS provides social workers from our informal supervision program, and probation provides deputy probation officers. Through multidisciplinary team meetings, the three departments work closely with the Community Incubator Lead teams and families to identify the needs that need to be addressed and goals to work toward together. This integrated holistic approach to serving families in the neighborhoods where they live really helps to remove barriers for families. It reduces the amount of time and effort it takes to navigate through multiple public systems, and reduces the amount of times that families have to retell their story, which, as we all know in and of itself, is very traumatic. Over the years, we've gained many insights from our work through this effort, which have led to some changes in the way we serve our families. A bit further into the presentation, Julie will share more specifics on cross-system approaches that have recently emerged, all of which reflect the shift in child welfare systems across our nation to take a more upstream approach that focuses on social determinants of health, strengthens families, promotes protective factors, and helps children and families remain safely together. I'd like to share some highlights from each department since our last update to the board. For Department of Human Assistance, they have been working with customers since the start of the pandemic. They have increased efforts of support by maintaining staff support at each community incubator site. They have outstationed staff who have worked with homeless services and Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency to secure housing, stabilize housing, and connect to rental assistance programs. DHA also has a new partnership with the National Association for the Advancement of Colored People to provide restaurant meals to families experiencing food insecurity due to the pandemic. This new collaboration will increase referrals and engagement of resources within the African-American community. For probation, when Assistant Division Chief Kasebeer comes up, you'll see some impressive data regarding the reduction of juvenile wards in the CIL zip codes. And as for DCFAS, specifically the Division of CPS, the CIL outstation collaboration continues to reflect partnership and collaboration to support community and families involved with CPS. I'm so sorry. This ongoing approach speaks to the importance of public and community agencies working together to support families in their own communities. I think the best way to illustrate this approach is to read a few statements from each of the teams that are working out there. One of our informal supervision social workers, Sarah Lee, has shared, quote, "Our CIL teams that are in place have been so beneficial to our families we work with. The presence of BCLC in the community is really immeasurable. Having CPS, DHS, and probation, along with our community partners in one location, is so beneficial to our clients. My clients are so appreciative of the services. I truly believe BCLC is an amazing piece, catalyst, piece of catalyst for larger change within our systems that historically have not always worked to the benefit of children and families." One of the deputy probation officers, Richard Wiley, shares, "My experience at Arden Arcade BCLC has been good. In the beginning, there was some tension due to the climate at the time with police use of force. This created a gap between us, because I was law enforcement. However, after building trust and a respectable relationship with them, everything has gotten better and continues to get better." And now to move on to the cultural broker information and CPS-specific. In addition to services provided within the CILs, DCFAS administers the Sacramento County Cultural Brokers Program with three community-based agencies. We implemented this program as a strategy, another strategy, to help reduce African-American child deaths, but also to reduce entries and re-entries of African-American children into the child welfare system, increase relative placements, increase safe and timely reunification of families, and improve trust between the department and African-American families. Direct services began as a pilot in 2018, moved into full implementation in 2019, and we are now starting to see these outcomes, which are, the data is noted on the slides. I cannot say enough about the impact that the cultural brokers has had within our work in child protective services. Eighty-two for the timeframe that we're presenting on today, for the last two fiscal years, eighty-two CIL referrals came directly from CPS social workers, 137 from cultural brokers themselves. Those referrals, as well as other referrals that come for, for cultural brokers, that come from attorneys, they can come from the bench officers, and people can also self-refer, has resulted in the last two fiscal years in 596 children and 281 families being served. The cultural broker support helped to prevent 90 kids from entering foster care. The support helped to reunify 86 children with their families. Forty-nine children, because of cultural broker support, were able to, who did enter care, were able to be placed safely with their relatives. And efforts that we're always working on in CPS is engagement of fathers. The cultural broker support helped us to engage 111 fathers over the last two years, which is pretty phenomenal. Before I hand the next portion off to Derek, I'll share some direct feedback regarding the cultural broker model. I wanted to share a few quotes from the families we serve specifically, because just as important as getting staff voice is getting the voice of our families that we serve. One father who unified shared, "I will tell people about the cultural brokers. The program does work for the families in our community." Another father who successfully completed our informal supervision program shared, "I thought that CPS was wrong for coming into our lives, but I now have a better understanding of the safety and risk factors that had to be addressed." A mom who's child was able to be returned home shared that she would highly recommend parents to have a cultural broker. She shared, "I've been getting a lot of help with communicating with my social worker." And another mother, whose ER, Emergency Response Investigation, was able to be closed successfully, shared that her cultural broker's role in the closing of her investigation was, she helped me to understand what the social worker was saying to me about my case. And this is really a critical component to the model, because, as we know within systems, so much can be misunderstood, and there's a lot of jargon that goes on, and it's very difficult for families to truly understand what is happening at one of the most traumatic times of their life. And our cultural broker teams have really helped to bridge the communication between our staff and the families, which is showing amazing results for helping parents, which in turn helps their kids. And with that, I will turn this over to Deputy Chief, Division Chief Derek Kasebeer. Thank you.
Thanks, Melissa. Thanks for sharing some of those, you know, brief vignettes and, you know, quotes from folks. I think that really helps to solidify, obviously, the presentation and the data, the numbers you show, but also those personal recollections of, you know, of, you know, what impact it had on them or their families as related to the work that's being done at the various levels with, certainly county staff and all the partners that are so much a part of this. So thanks for sharing.
Absolutely. You're welcome. Thank you.
Okay, Derek, you're up. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. For those of you guys that don't know me, thanks for the introduction, of course. Derek Kasebeer, I'm the Assistant Chief Deputy of our Juvenile Field Division with the Sacramento County Probation Department.
Great. This is your first time presenting to the board?
It is in this assignment.
Yeah, that's what I thought. Okay.
Second since 2015, last time I was here presenting.
Great. Well, welcome, welcome back.
I appreciate it. So I'm going to review the next few slides. One is the county-wide trend data displayed on this side. What this is going to do is just provide a context for you to review these slides. These slides are going to be presented later on in the PowerPoint. It's just going to give you a, a good context of what these numbers mean, as well as the following slide, which is our probation performance indicators. This slide in particular, it was compiled by First Five Sacramento evaluators to look at countywide trends for the causes of death that BCLC is working to reduce. In this specific slide, you can see on the top, it says third-party homicides. Third-party homicides, as we know, are the killing of a child by a person with or without malice aforethought, where the perpetrator was not the primary caregiver. Okay, these can include crimes such as gang violence, DUIs, where as a result of driving under the influence of alcohol or drug, could result in a fatal accident, resulting in the death of a child. If you look at the blue line, there's three different graphs on there. The top blue line represents African-American youth. The yellow-orange line represents non-African-Americans, and then there's a county-wide average, which is represented in red. If you look at the bottom of the graph, it's broken up into years, and each one of those subcategories are three-year increments. First Five Sacramento County Public Health, the Child Death Review Team, and the Sierra Health Foundation have all agreed to use the three-year rolling averages. This prevent anomalies from year to year, and also prevent, or it also helps provide more stable and reliable data when collecting it. For each of the data slides, the resemble, that resemble this one, as you'll see further in the PowerPoint, we start from 2012 to 2014. We use this as a baseline. At the beginning of 2012, we're kind of the efforts had just started gaining traction in trying to, in resolve third-party homicides. And in 2015, it's really when it started beginning traction. So if you compare the blue line, okay, at the baseline rate of 4.5 African-American deaths in 2012, which is the first dot all the way to the left, to the rate of 5.1 for 2017, 2019, which represents a 15% increase overall of African-American deaths, children, child deaths, which is a 54% increase in the disparity between non-African-Americans. You look at those numbers, and it's a considerable jump, but we have to provide the context. As far as the number of child deaths related to third-party homicides is relatively small, so any number is going to shift that data. I think we can all agree that any death is unacceptable, right? And we're looking forward to combating these deaths into working with the BLC, and I think it's trending in the right direction. If you look at the rolling average from beginning in 2015 to 2017, compared to the efforts to combat this issue towards the end of 2017, you can see a steady decline. That decline is about when BCLC started, which resulted in a 4% reduction overall of African-American child deaths and an 8% increase in the disparity gap. So as a result, we believe we're trending in the right direction with these efforts.
Excuse me just for saying, Derek, so if I understand, you said trending in the right direction, steadily decreasing, but if you're using the last three blue dots to the right there, it's 1/10 to 1% on a, again, rolling three-year average, just going in the right direction, it's going down. But when you see the jump from, you know, from where it was the third year in, I guess I'm trying to have a better understand, I understand, you know, it's relative to numbers, and every life is, is, is important, but so explain to me how that's a steady decrease, just the 1/10 to 1%?
It's incremental on this graph, right?
Yeah, well, I guess incremental is probably a fairer way to describe it, but, yeah.
Right. But it just demonstrates that from when we really started gaining traction of the BCLC program from 2015, it is going down. You'll see from the next slide, it explains it a little more.
Okay.
But it is incremental, and I can't speak about where the jump was from 2015, from 4.5 to 5.3. It's just what the data suggests.
Well, and it's decreasing overall. I mean, obviously, you look at the chart, and you have the mid-range, which is obviously the, I guess, the average of all. But those actually look to be just a little bit, actually, overall decline is, is actually on a steeper gradient than, than what's at the top of the chart, correct?
Correct.
Three tenths of, they're at either 3 or 2 tenths of 1% versus up above. But again, I agree the trend's in the right direction. I just, I just was trying to get some sense. Could you, what are the raw numbers behind those? I see Julie's got her hand up, so maybe that's later?
Yeah, okay.
I can help now, or I can help when I get up there.
Okay, that's fine. I can hold. I just was, that's fine, Julie. So good.
This is a, we have more slides of countywide trends further on in the presentation, and I might explain it.
Yeah, I wasn't reading ahead, so I didn't want to get ahead of you or Julie. Just as I'm listening to you, I wanted to ask those questions.
No, I appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, go ahead. All right.
So this slide represents probation performance indicators. Okay, this slide represents a number, number of juvenile wards, or youths brought into the juvenile justice system located within zip codes, representing the location of the community incubator lead sites within specific areas. The CILs are positioned in seven areas of the county to include North Highlands and Foothill Farms area, represented by zip codes 95660, 95841, and 95842. Del Paso Heights, represented by zip codes 95815 and 95838. Arden Arcade area, represented by zip codes 95821, 95825, and 95864. Fruit Ridge Road and Stockton Boulevard, represented by zip codes 95820 and 95824. Oak Park, represented by zip code 95817. The Meadowview area, represented by zip codes 95822 and 95832, and Valley High, represented by zip codes 95823 and 95828. So you can see each column is represented in a different color code, reflecting the year, with the most current year. It's a little hard to make out on this graph, but it's the furthest color code in dark blue all the way to the right, representing 2021. What we see is a steady decline of juvenile wards in the BCLC service neighborhoods, which is a great result. What does this mean? We believe the correlation between the overall decline of juvenile wards in the CIL neighborhoods can be attributed to the BCLC collaborations to include, but not limiting to, two factors: access to services, and kind of reiterate what Mr. Jones said in his previous PowerPoint, early intervention and prevention efforts. Access to services is a major contributing factor to include referrals to programs to increase family functioning within the home, while addressing behavioral issues with the youth, including gang participation and awareness, delinquency, antisocial behavior, substance abuse, trauma, and mental health services. substance abuse, trauma, and mental health services. Also to have that close contact and personalized relationship with the probation officer assigned to the CILs to assist the youth in navigating the juvenile justice system and to build a bridge and trust between our law enforcement partners. Early intervention and prevention efforts to include educational opportunities to provide the youth with knowledge of making positive lifestyle choices, together with collaborating with First Five Sacramento to educate families.
Derek, if I could pause this for a second, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. This is, this is a very telling slide. The graph is very telling. However, I want to make sure I understand it clearly. This is for all juvenile wards regardless of ethnicity, correct? Or is it just African-American juvenile wards?
I believe this is all juvenile wards that are located in that specific ZIP code.
Okay. So do we have the, do we have a disaggregated dataset that tells us what it is?
Yeah.
Just for African-American?
I do.
Juvenile wards?
Yep.
Is it a, you don't have to recite all the numbers, but is there, is there a similar trend in each case?
So countywide, based on all these ZIP codes mentioned, youth on probation, African-American, 376, non-African-American, 364.
But over time, though, what is, what's the comparable over time for just African-American juvenile wards, I guess is what I'm asking? Do we have that data?
I can't speak of that. I don't know if Chief Yarber wants to weigh in. I don't have that data with me. Sorry.
And just to be clear, too, this is, a juvenile ward is any young person aged what-to-what?
Zero to 18.
Zero to 18.
Brought into the juvenile justice system.
Okay. All right. Yeah, I don't know if the chief wants to chime in.
Yeah, good afternoon, Supervisor. This is Chief Probation Officer Marlon Yarber. Sorry I cannot be there. Appreciate Derek standing in for me. So the trend with regards to the number of youth on probation or the wards essentially in the ZIP codes, I think is remarkable. It does speak to sort of our overall efforts at reform. And Supervisor Serna, with your question around, sort of how does that also relate to just the African-American population? And while we see those numbers decline with regards to the African-American population, we do still have disparities, and so there's certainly still overrepresentation. We can follow up with the board as regards to those specific data points, however.
No, I appreciate that, Chief. I think that would be an interesting subset of this, you know, what this display is telling us, because that really gets to the, you know, the whole question or nature of the challenge in front of us with regards to the disparity for a particular ethnicity.
Agreed. Agreed.
Great. Thanks, Supervisor Serna. Thanks, Chief. Okay. Go ahead, Derek, continue.
That was it, basically, on this side. I mean, just as a result, we see a pattern of these strong downward trends. African-American youth are benefiting from the CIL sites and BCLC services.
Okay. Very good. Any questions? I don't see any questions at this juncture, so I know you'll be in the chamber, so, all right?
I appreciate it.
Next presenter. Hi, Julie.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. It's nice to see you all again and to actually finally meet Supervisor Desmond in person, I believe. So yes, before I even jump in, oh, I am Julie Galelo, your First Five Executive Director. I'm going to go back to this slide so I can answer Chair Natoli's question. So because we used those three-year rolling averages, what happened was sort of an anomaly in the year 2017. We had four deaths that year, juvenile deaths, and in the prior years, it had been either zero or one. And in the year 2018 and 2019, we were back down to one again. So what you're seeing is a three-year, 2017 first shows up in the 2015-17, then it's in the 2016 to 18 as well. So you're going to kind of see it roll over that time. But what we think you should see in the next, next time we come to you next year would be something that looks closer to the first two of the data points.
Okay. So that helps. Thank you, Julie.
You bet. Okay. So what I was going to share with you all this afternoon is just First Five's complementary efforts toward the Black Child Legacy Campaign programs. I'm going to focus specifically on just last fiscal year, and the activities that I'll highlight really help, are served within that collective impact model that we're using. And in many instances, as Melissa mentioned, it's those partnerships between our agencies at the county, the community, and the CILs that really make the First Five work possible. So there are those three main causes of death that happen in the first five years of life, and so we focus on those three areas with First Five funding. To start with is our perinatal conditions, which includes low birth weight and prematurity. And we continue to partner with our SAC County Public Health Department on our unequal birth campaign, which really is a campaign to raise awareness about racism as the root of the health disparities and poor birth outcomes for moms and babies, black moms and babies specifically. And then we also fund a perinatal pregnancy peer support program called Black Mothers United through Her Health First. And Black Mothers United connects pregnant women with, with the coaches from the community who have been trained, and those coaches provide their clients with one-on-one case management, advocacy, support, even transportation to their appointments. Another area that we focus on is safe sleep. To reduce infant sleep-related deaths, we fund a program called Safe Sleep Baby, which is operated by the Child Abuse Prevention Center. And it focuses on program, this program focuses on families with children specifically under the age of six months, because those are the highest-risk months for sleep-related deaths. Although CAPSIS serves all families with this program, it was really created and targeted toward African-American families. They did a whole lot of formative research on this project to develop messages and visuals that would really resonate with black families. And then in addition to the educational piece of it, there is funding to distribute cribs to all who need them in the community. And one piece of the systems change that I'll speak about a little later is the work with the four major health systems in our county. Through this program, we have been able to secure partnership with all eight birthing hospitals so that they now are informed about Safe Sleep Baby and refer their families to Safe Sleep Baby. First Five in partnership with the Department of Child, Family, and Adult Services. The two of us fund nine family resource centers throughout the county. Those provide intensive home visiting, parent education, and workshops, classes, and then crisis intervention and case management services in order to prevent child abuse and neglect. And although our FRCs have always served African-American families, with the First Five investments, we were able to really bolster two FRCs, one in Valley High and one in Meadowview, and then to reopen a closed FRC in Arden Arcade area.
Julie, can I just ask you?
Sure.
I was, didn't want to test your memory, but you gave three of the nine. Could you give us where the other six are located at?
Oh, you're going to test my memory? But I think I got it.
Sorry.
Oak Park, North Highlands, North Sacramento. Yes, thank you. Ranch Cordova. Well, Linda, I can't remember. Say again?
Oh, River Oaks, yeah.
Oak Park. That's the other one. La Familia, yes. Yes, thank you.
And again, it's important, you're going to focus on the three where you've been able to do some focused work, but I just, it's important, I mean, we do have this spectrum of FRCs that really branch out into the community, so I just wanted to...
Absolutely.
You got an A on your test, by the way, so. Very good.
Thanks. Well, maybe a B.
No, thanks, Julie.
And they all do serve African-American families, and they all do participate in training around racial equity and cultural responsiveness. So as a cohort, they go through that together, but the First Five investment really went above and beyond just that, the typical program that was there before, to really focus on this, this specific population, really to fill those gaps where we saw them and to make sure we had a presence in those seven, in all seven of the hotspot neighborhoods. So that's a lot about sort of campaigns and direct services, but we know that in order to make really lasting impact, we do have to look at systems changes in improving the systems that serve our children and families. So the collective impact model has really set those foundational relationships between all of our agencies and across departments in the county. And then those opportunities have led to shifts in policies and processes, how we work together, and how we interact with our clients. So some of the examples of our systems work are highlighted on this slide, including a new expansion of our Safe Sleep Baby program, a home visiting coordinating collaborative, and a new program to launch in July called Building Strong Families, which will have navigators in each of the family resource centers and the community incubator leads.
Julie, what would be the responsibility of the navigators then?
So the navigators are going to specifically connect families to services that they're eligible for in their communities. And it's really, what we heard from the family resource centers and CILs is that when they're engaged in case management work with their clients, it's usually like a short-term, come in, get a referral to something, and head out the door. And this was what they needed, what they said they needed was additional time to spend with families, perhaps over three to six months, to make sure that the fam, that those referrals that they provide are actually acted upon, that they can help them walk through any barriers that they experience. We're going to be launching a closed-loop referral system with this, with this group of 15 navigators called Unite Us, which will allow anybody making a referral to any other location who's also registered to use Unite Us, be able to see when that family went in for services and what they accessed, and to be able to follow up with them afterward. They'll be doing an assessment, a pre-assessment to determine what the needs are, and then a follow-up assessment, too.
Great. Good. Supervisor Serna had a couple of questions.
Thank you.
Yes.
So some other questions, Julie. So will the navigators attempt to kind of holistically find out what services are needed? For instance, if the first time a navigator and a client meet, perhaps the client is, you know, interested in, I don't know, parenting classes or something like that, will the navigators kind of probe a little bit and find out if they're eligible for general assistance? And if so, you know, get them connected to those benefits?
That's exactly it. And they may present with one thing that they're thinking about, I need rent for next month.
Right.
But then the assessment that we're, that we've created is really helpful to say, okay, and it looks like there's these other needs, too, and let me connect you. And not only connect you, let me make the phone calls and help you actually access those services if needed. It's slightly more hand-holding, but it was really focused on the communities that were hardest hit by COVID, that have more economically, you know, devastated by the pandemic, and so need a little bit more during this time of recovery.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. So now I'll jump into some of the data that you have in your packets. In this first slide, we're looking at the overall rate of infant deaths in Sacramento County, and these are deaths due to any cause for a child under one year of age. And when we compare the baseline from 2012, 2014, to the current baseline through 2017-19, we saw a 17% reduction overall in African-American infant deaths and 32% reduction in the disparity gap, which definitely meets the Blue Ribbon Commission's goal of reducing by 10 to 20% by 2020. We did see a slight increase in African-American infant death rates in the past two averages. As you can tell, there's a slight uptick from 8.3 to 9.0. And we, that was being impacted by a spike in 2018, sort of like what you saw, the spike in, in third-party homicide. However, the good news is that the, the total number of African-American deaths in 2019 was lower than 2017 and much lower than 2018. So we will see this downward trend again in the future years. The next slide we'll look at is infant, infant sleep, oops, sorry, wrong one, perinatal conditions. So our perinatal conditions are those things I mentioned, such as low birth weight and prematurity, but it's also placental abruption and congenital infections that are preventable. This rate continues to decrease, with the most current rolling averages lower than any other previous averages. And compared to our baseline, we do have a 10% reduction in, in the death rate and 5% reduction in disparity. But I would say that while we're trending in the right direction, this is the one where we kind of have the furthest to go. We still do have a pretty big disparity gap, and we haven't, we haven't reached the Blue Ribbon Commission's goals in this one quite yet, and we're hovering right around the bottom of that goal. And then infant sleep-related deaths is definitely a more, much more dramatic decline here, 56% reduction from the baseline period and a 65% reduction in disparity, so clearly meeting and exceeding the Blue Ribbon Commission's goals. And we believe that this is due in large part to the work of Safe Sleep Baby, including all the many partners in the community who are consistently promoting that safe sleep message, who are distributing cribs throughout the community, as well as the work with the hospitals. That systems work means that every single child born in Sacramento County is asked a question before they leave the hospital. That question is, how do you intend to sleep your child? And if they say that, you know, the baby will be sleeping in a bed with them, or the baby will be sharing a bassinet or a crib with another child or another bed, then they refer them to the Safe Sleep Baby class or provide education onsite, call in, call in a Safe Sleep Baby staff to come even into the hospital to do an education and distribute the crib. So it's kind of like what happened when they started asking about car seats. Every, every parent who leaves has to say, they have to ask, how are you bringing your child home? So now it's, how do you intend to sleep your child? That's a huge difference for the county.
Julie, if I could just ask you that, so is it safe to, I guess presume rather than assume, that the, what you just described is fully integrated into both the, obviously, the medical facilities, hospital systems, but in what we're doing, and it's not one of those things that, you know, budgets got tied again or whatever, that it would go away? Because this is ongoing. It will, you know, new mothers, new families.
Yes.
And new children. And so I guess that's my question. Is this, in a way, do you think it's, I guess, obviously, make sure that people pay attention to it, but that it is now integrated in what we do, just as you said?
It is sustainable. It is in their policies now, much the way breastfeeding policies have changed over time. This is a change in policy because we had all of the major health systems at the table and onboard and participating in Safe Sleep Baby when needed. And once one of them starts it, then there's a bit of a competition. And once one of them starts it, then there's a bit of a competition, and then everybody does it. And we even had Kaiser donating cribs to the program and other things. So it's been very successful and will stick around.
Okay.
Yep.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah, sure.
If I can just add on to some, some of that, just as a friendly reminder to, to the public and to my colleagues, you know, with the cooperation of our CEO, we also, in the spirit of making this as sustainable, an expectation for county residents and ourselves, committed ourselves to multi-year budget appropriations, too. So I think that speaks to the interest in making sure that we don't treat this as some kind of one-off exercise. This is going to be something that hopefully progresses with even more success to the point where you will have so-called, I guess, graduate former children that benefited from the program that ultimately start their own families. And perhaps from the experience of understanding how they were slept appropriately, you know, can commit themselves to propagating those, those same great habits with all that terrific information that, that we provide.
Maybe the same crib passed down from generation to generation, right?
There you go.
Maybe not.
Maybe. Make sure those things are still, still properly working and functional.
Understood.
Yep. And then my last slide is the rates specifically for child abuse and neglect homicide. And this one's different than the others because it goes zero through 17 years. And starting at the baseline period, we had a rate of 7.1, and by the last reporting period, down to 1.7. It's pretty remarkable. It represents a 76% reduction overall and an 89% reduction in disparity thus far. We absolutely believe that this indicates that the, this critical prevention and early intervention programs are working in the community. It's those BCLC providers, it's the community incubator leads, it's the family resource centers, and it's the cultural brokers offering that liaison, education and communication to the families in the system. These culturally responsive, community-based, family-centered supports are making all the difference for African American children and their families in our county. And that concludes my presentation.
Well, thank you, Julie. Thank you for your leadership and good work, certainly of the commission and, and, you know, all the folks that are partners here. It has taken a lot of, a lot of effort to get to this juncture, and certainly a lot of work ahead, but I think certainly showing some very, very good outcomes. And, you know, children and families thrive and live because of some of the work that's gone on here, or a lot of the work, so.
Yep. We have an amazingly forward-thinking commission who was first out the gate with, with Supervisor Serna's leadership, first out the gate, really funding upfront and actually leading the state in this work. We are definitely seen as, as leaders in reducing African American child death because of, because of this collaborative collective impact model.
Right. Well, I can't thank you enough, Phil, for your work and leadership on this. And certainly you've rallied the board behind it, but I know devoted a lot of time, effort and energy to what we, you know, hear about here today. So you're up, and then Supervisor Desmond.
Thank you. So I just wanted to offer my sincerest thanks to Julie and the entire team. By team, I mean the extension of, you know, the members of the steering committee and First Five staff, and Michelle Kayes and her staff, and, you know, everyone that, and Marlon Yarber with probation, everyone that's played a critical role, not just in the past year, but the, over the years, believe this is what now the, about a decade since we first committed ourselves to, at first, understanding the nature of the challenge, and then being very thoughtful as a, as a county to, I think, challenge ourselves, hold ourselves accountable for a trend that had, you know, plagued, plagued us, plagued our community for way too long. And I think what today's presentation tells us is that indeed there have been some, some great successes, but there's still a lot of work to do. And, you know, that work is not going to be fulfilled without the continued commitment of, you know, all the various professional folks, public servants, but also, you know, our clergy and grandparents and parents and, you know, those that are hopeful in starting healthy families, and the folks that are CILs and navigators. And it's just a, an intense personnel infrastructure around this very specific initiative that I am just continually so impressed with. And because I do have feet planted firmly in both spaces, both at First Five and certainly here, you know, I want to thank my colleagues on both, my colleagues certainly here on the Board of Supervisors for being so supportive over the years to see this come to fruition. And certainly my fellow commissioners on First Five, who I think more frequently than, than not, allude to the successes of Black Child Legacy Campaign as one of the more important spaces that we work in. So again, the, the, the people that you're helping, to all those that are, that are part of this effort, the people that you're helping, most importantly, the children that you're saving, is what it's all about. So thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And I'll just, I'll pile on here. Julie, it's good to see you in person for the first time as well. And I want to, first, I want to say, you know, I'll underscore what Chair Nantoli said about Supervisor Serna's work here. I mean, really admirable and quite a legacy. Phil, the work that you've done setting this up and the lives that it's changed young people's lives, families' lives, who are the most vulnerable in our community. And I just want to thank you, Julie and Melissa and Derek for the presentation today and your work. It does strike me that it's amazing the partnerships that you've created, how many people from different, different stakeholders that you've rallied around to create success. And I also think to myself that, I mean, there's so many effective things that you have developed that we could apply to other underserved populations in Sacramento County. And I, I think to myself about our, our growing refugee population here that is so vulnerable. So I think we can use some of the lessons that you've created for us. And just want to just underscore my thanks and applaud you for your efforts.
Great. Okay, well, we're not done yet. We get to hear from some of the stars along with us. So we've got our presentation on the Black Child Legacy Campaign. I don't know who our presenters, I thought I wasn't going to assume, so come forward and continue the good news story here, so.
Good afternoon, supervisors. It's, thank you. I was looking at that earlier. But good afternoon. It's great to meet you all, great to be with you today. My name is Shelley Dyer, and I'm the Senior Program Officer with the Sierra Health Foundation Black Child Legacy Campaign. An overview of our presentation today, we will just take a look at the successes, the past successes that were accomplished prior to my joining Sierra Health Foundation in November of 2021. We'll also just take a look at our work that goes beyond the impacts that we have with reducing African American child deaths, but also spans to the black maternal health crisis and how we're combating that as well. Our violence prevention work with our Healing the Hood team, as well as systems change successes and impact by the numbers is where we'll just wrap up there. This is an origin story that you all are quite familiar with, especially one of our early champions, Supervisor Serna. But I'll share for the public record that the Steering Committee on Reducing African American Child Deaths was created, and therefore the Black Child Legacy Campaign was launched. The initial goal of the campaign was to reduce African American child deaths by 10 to 20% by the year 2020. And it's very exciting that that goal was surpassed, but the fact remains that there are still far too many black children dying in Sacramento County around the nation, and there's, there's still much work to be done. So our commitment remains to improve the physical, mental, emotional, economic and social health of Sacramento's black community. This is just a shot of our working infrastructure here. Our work is concentrated across seven different neighborhoods, including Valley High, Art and Arcade, Del Paso Heights in North Sacramento, Oak Park, North Highlands and Foothill Farms, Fruit Ridge Stockton, as well as Meadow View. The phrase that it takes a village definitely rings true when it comes to the Black Child Legacy Campaign. Our community leaders within the community incubator lead sites are really to credit for the amazing work that they do with the communities due to their knowledge, their proximity, their lived experiences and their ability to make an impact because of their relationships there within the community. But we, you know, already presented together here today as a team. Our community spans also with the probation office, as well as our partners at First Five and beyond. We'll share a bit more about our community of people who really contribute to the success here. But just to share a bit about the surpassing of the 2020 goal is that according to Applied Survey Research's fiscal year 2020 to 2021 report, infant perinatal conditions decreased, death due to infant perinatal conditions decreased by 23%. Infant sleeps, infant safe sleep issues, death decreased by 33%. Child abuse and neglect deaths.
He had a home run, Shelley.
Oh, no. Okay. Child abuse and neglect deaths decreased by 25%, and third-party homicides decreased by 48%, which is really astounding there. But of course, there's still work to be done. So just to loop back to our multidisciplinary team that contributes to the success and partnerships of our work, this is, you know, cross-sector work that's done both in communities and across the different agencies. Our community incubator lead sites, our CILs, as we refer to them as, across the seven neighborhoods in partnership with the Sacramento County Probation Department, the Department of Child, Family and Adult Services, and Child Protective Services, as well as the Department of Human Assistance, our crisis intervention workers who are there at the community level to intervene when it comes to violence prevention and support with that wraparound ongoing services as well, Her Health First, and also our, our hospital partners at UC Davis Health.
Shelley, can I just ask you, so Her Health First, I don't know, I've heard of that organization. So is that a collaborative or is that a standalone organization?
Sure, it is a, it's a standalone organization, but they're also the fiscal agent for building healthier communities. And I think it was Julie, you mentioned them earlier. They house the Black Mothers United program, which provides black mothers with free doula services and pregnancy coaches to coach them throughout their pregnancies to increase healthy birth outcomes within African American communities.
Oh, great. Go ahead, Phil.
All right, mic is off. Are they still over at Fruit Ridge Community Cooperative?
They are. They're still there.
Great.
Okay, very good. Thanks.
You're welcome. Okay. This is a quote from one of our crisis, our community intervention workers here. It's all about being able to meet the kids and meet the youth where they are. And in the process of doing that, it's gaining their respect. So really just being able to relate to the youth, relate to the community that they're working with because of their knowledge of them and knowledge of the community is, is definitely one of the successes of the Black Child Legacy Campaign. The black maternal health crisis, just to center us in this, so beyond our work with reducing African American child deaths, we have definitely started to expand more to combat the fact that black moms across this country, and including in Sacramento County, are dying while bringing life to this earth. And that is absolutely heartbreaking and devastating. So today in the U.S., moms, especially black moms, are dying at one of the highest rates in the world. According to the 2020 CDC Maternal Mortality Report, it's at approximately 55 black women died per 100,000 live births in the year of 2020. So this is almost three times the percent of the maternal mortality, maternal mortality rate of, of white women. And just to highlight that again, black women in Sacramento County specifically are four times more likely to die from pregnancy-related conditions. And, you know, that again is just very heartbreaking. We'll share more about some of the programs that we have to address this issue, but just want to really highlight that this is, continues to be a very devastating reality here in this county.
Shelley, if I could just ask you, so in the statistics, that is one of the highest rates in, you know, throughout the, around the globe, is that as compared, compared to developed nations or developing nations, or just overall?
That's actually overall.
Wow.
So even in this, you know, very wealthy country, you look at other countries that are still developing, and our maternal mortality rates, you know, pell in comparison to, to theirs.
Wow.
Yes, thank you for that.
Pretty sobering statistic. Yep. Supervisor Frost?
Do you attribute that to not enough care during pregnancy or early care during early pregnancy, or?
There are many things that you can attribute it to, but we attribute it to racism, systemic racism, in that is in the type of care that black mothers are receiving, the recognition historically in this country around the pain that black people face not being necessarily recognized. And I think something to point out, too, that this statistic goes across income levels. It's not a, this is not a issue of, of women who are low-income, which doesn't make it any better, but this, this is true for black women across the board, across income levels. So it's definitely something that we attribute to systemic racism in terms of care. It can be also in terms of access to care and just the ability to, for providers to really see the pain and respect the experiences and, and knowledge that black women, black birthing people bring to their birthing experiences.
Thank you.
You're welcome. And this is our wraparound support overview. So the work doesn't stop when we talk about our crisis intervention workers arriving at a scene and responding. This, our Healing the Hood staff continues to provide case management work. And during the fiscal year 20 to 21, there were a total of 364 unique individuals, people who were served through the case management system, through the Healing the Hood team. And of those, of those participants, there were 78% were prevention services. So this is, you know, prevention and, you know, diversion prior to there being any type of violent activity occurring. And there's also the intervention level where that is, you know, actually intervening and preventing retaliatory response to, to gun violence or any other types of violence. But this, that's the, the breakdown is between intervention and prevention there.
Shelley, can I interrupt for a second? I think you may have skipped over a slide.
Did I?
The gun, gun violence?
Yeah, a couple, I think, yeah, they got, somehow it got skipped over. Healing the Hood infrastructure, gun violence.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah.
I don't know how that happened. Well, I already jumped in the infrastructure. Thank you for catching that. And we'll loop back around here. Okay. This is setting the context for gun violence that, you know, this, as we all know, is not a, this is not something that's only happening in Sacramento. It's something that's happening across this country. So in 2018 to 2019, there were zero youth homicides in Sacramento. And cities the size of Sacramento, though, did see a 27% increase of homicides in 2020. And this just breaks down the increase in homicides in cities that are similar sized to Sacramento, as well as your, your smaller towns. So a steady increase across the nation when it comes to gun violence over the past years. And here we go. The Healing the Hood Crisis Response, this is the protocol and flow of how the work actually happens on the ground from incident all the way through the long-term support and follow-up. These incidents occur, and, you know, often we'll hear from, you know, one of our, the person who leads up our on-the-ground Healing the Hood Team, Mr. King and Mrs. Deborah Cummings, who you all may be familiar with. It's often law enforcement who will first call the Healing the Hood Team to get that response. So this, that speaks to the level of deep partnership and relationship that exists between the Healing the Hood Team and, and law enforcement. So our Healing the Hood Team is called, and then they're dispatched, and there's an immediate response. There are crisis intervention workers assigned to all seven of the community incubator lead sites, and they go to the location that is most relevant to their work, when sometimes they provide support outside of their typical jurisdiction. But that support can look like direct support for the families at the scene, through their grieving process, also just communicating with law enforcement, and just providing that prevention for any retaliatory violence that could happen and preventing that from occurring. And it even goes through that long-term follow-up and support, which can often look like funeral service support for the families, and just connecting them to case management through the Black Child Legacy Campaign services, which will be even more targeted through the family mat- which will be even more targeted through the Family Navigator Program that Julie was mentioning earlier, First Five, which we're really grateful for that partnership to grow as well and support the case management work.
Shelley, if I could just pause for a minute, Phil?
Yeah, no, I just wanted to point out kind of the obvious here, but this is the intersectionality that I referenced earlier or near the conclusion of Mr. Jones' presentation, especially that third bullet point there, the de-escalation, diffusing tensions. You know, other folks like Darrell Roberts and Tina Roberts, who run the Roberts Family Development Center, you know, have been outstanding and trusted agents to do exactly what Eric was mentioning in terms of having the right messengers with, you know, a more familiar, I guess, life experience to some of the families and the individuals that maybe otherwise prompted to retaliate, I think, is working very well. And it's an important part of this effort. And so I just wanted to make sure that we don't lose sight of the fact that we're already trying to, we're already putting in motion some of the strategies that were mentioned in the previous presentation around addressing gun violence.
Thank you, Supervisor Serena. This is Healing the Hood, just a picture of what the gang prevention can look like. And it's not just, it's not only targeted at the person who may be involved, but it's a whole-family approach. We believe that working with whole families is the way to go. Education and workplace development, workforce development, as well as mentoring opportunities and positive emotional development and that relationship building that happens with persistent communication and just the ability to, over a long time, I've heard from some of the CILs that they have worked with same families. Maybe not on a particular case, but the families come in, whether it's for a family event or a community event, over years and years. And that's what we like to see, is just providing those really positive opportunities for people to engage in the communities that they love in positive ways as a way to prevent violence. This is another quote from a CIL lead here. And that's, "While the CIWs are at the hospital, they're working with the families to try to help that family navigate through the system. If you hadn't had the CIWs in between the families and the police, it would have resulted into something we probably would have been watching on the 10:00 PM news that night." So this, again, speaks to the intentionality that is placed behind preventing any types of retaliation. And, you know, often there's language and jargon that may be used in hospital settings or in your social work settings that people like the cultural brokers or the CIWs are able to really break that language down and share with families exactly what they're facing and provide support on that level. And another quote here. "Retaliation shootings have decreased because you've got these women and men that have really put their ear to the ground to try to stop those kinds of things. And they can do it in a way that police officers can't because they can move more freely through the community and have those conversations that police officers can't." So this, again, just speaks to the close connection. And often, you know, some of the crisis intervention workers actually live in those communities where they're working. So they just know their people that are there and really understand how to communicate.
Could I just pause it for a second? I just wanted to ask maybe you, Shelley, or maybe Ann or someone else. So with our wellness crisis response teams and our call center, we've got some of this work going on already in the community. What is the intended linkage then here? We've, you know, the work that obviously our cultural brokers have done, certainly what they've been doing through the various points of access in the community, but they do end up at the hospital or, you know, maybe even another call for service. So is there planned, I assume there is, but is there planned integration with what we've already built, this framework, but we're looking to bring onboard with additional staff resources, community resources?
Yes, I'm going to let Mr. Wagstaff.
Okay, good. Thanks.
More specifically, we have Siobhan Katari on the line, who can speak to this point, I think. Siobhan? She was on the line. She was there earlier.
Okay.
Yes, there is work there, Supervisor, to make that connection. And I can have Siobhan follow up with more information on that. Absolutely.
Okay. Because again, you know, one of the slides earlier was the infrastructure. And we're, you know, we've got pieces of infrastructure in place. And again, with some proven outcomes, I would just hope that, again, as we're looking at behavioral health, as we're looking at community response, at wellness, obviously, whether it's in the, you know, African-American community or elsewhere, all those, you know, beginning to knit those together. And again, I don't know if there's going to be any redundancy, but I just think it's really important because, again, we've got some proven outcomes here. And with some folks that are already have that skillset, I think they can certainly be of benefit as we look to the broader community for responding to all kinds of crisis situations, irrespective of one's ethnic background or what they're, you know, where the community come from. So, okay.
Thank you. I can respond to that as well, and another colleague may want to also. But the difference between the two really is the crisis intervention worker is really there. They go literally to crime scenes. So they're, when, yes, they're out on the crime scenes. They see the yellow tape, and they're there with families in that moment, as well as providing that case management. And the cultural brokers are not there in those immediate moments of crises, like on the ground at the crime scenes. They're going into homes and, you know, supporting at hospitals and, you know, through the social work process. I'm not sure if another colleague wants to share.
But I think, whether it's a warm handoff or it's a coordination or collaboration, I think that people knowing those resources, you know, irrespective of where it is in that kind of spectrum, and hopefully, again, with the intent of preventing it or intervening early on before you get to the crisis and/or to the situation at the hospital where then you're having to deal with, you know, the fallout, so to speak, of what, you know, what might occur next. So.
Yes, if I could add, Supervisor Natoli, it makes perfect sense that we, that those crisis response teams that we're developing work with resources that are already in place. And in the situation just described, if there was a mental health concern, that absolutely that would be something that we can and should respond to.
Sure. I mean, either in advance or certainly in retrospect. I mean, there's a, you know, a spectrum. As we're trying to build this infrastructure in the community, certainly with the work that's been done, obviously, over the better part of a decade now with Black Child Legacy Campaign and the cultural brokers and so forth. So I just, it just occurred to me that that was kind of a natural as we begin to put these things together. So Supervisor Desmond?
Thank you, Sherri. Thanks, Shelley, for the presentation. I appreciate you bringing that up. I think it's great because it shows whether it's in the context of a mental health crisis response or maybe a response to a violent incident in a community, we are recognizing that through partnerships, we can identify ways where it's not a law enforcement response, a response that we've been relying on for far too long. But it's also a partnership where, you know, some of the partners from Healing the Hood are educating law enforcement, right, about the needs of the community and vice versa. So that's what I think really the beauty is of this and the Wellness Crisis Call Center. So, thank you.
Thank you. And I will also add, there is that warm handoff. The cultural brokers are often working at the same site as the crisis intervention workers. So they're not, it's not, they know each other. So I think that that does help with building that connection and that recognition, I think, that you were mentioning earlier, Chair Natoli.
Well, mutually supportive, because again, those are tough, you know, those are tough situations to, you know, you have a skillset, and that's the work that one does. But I think knowing that there are others working in at least the overall realm of trying to, you know, maintain a healthy community, to support families, support individuals, to avoid violence, avoid bad outcomes, you know, in a variety of different ways. And, again, it's a big community out there. But again, I just, it's good to know, because, again, that's got to be tough work in the trenches, so to speak, so in and out in the hood.
I definitely admire the work that the crisis intervention workers and the cultural brokers do every day. It's very up close, and they definitely experience some secondary trauma, which is something that we are constantly working through as well, is how can we support them through showing up for work every day and really seeing a lot of traumatic things that I have not personally seen firsthand either.
Very good. Thanks, Shelley.
Thank you. Here are some of our systems chain successes. With our previously launched Black Doula Pilot Program, some were shared earlier around the Safe Sleep Baby Protocol that's adopted and is just a part of the process of families exiting the hospital to ensure that they are equipped with cribs. County staff being on-site at the Neighborhood Community Incubator Lead Sites. This includes probation staff as well and our cultural broker team also. The county Child Protective Services implementing the cultural broker program that we've also mentioned a few times today, as well as just having this really coordinated county-wide strategy across different teams to collaborate together in adopting this crisis response protocol. Here is just a picture of the people who've been served and engaged with through, from fiscal year 20 to 2021. There are a lot of different ways that people were served, whether that was through engagement and positive activities, leadership roles, or connecting people and families to prenatal care. But there were 10,702 African-American residents who received services. And I'll say that that data is disaggregated in this way to just express the African-American residents who received services, because that is the target of the Black Child Legacy Campaign. But there's often people who walk through the doors who are not Black, who are not African-American, and the CILs don't shy away from serving people who are in need of the support that they can provide. And our COVID-19 relief support is where we'll wrap up here. There was $784,907 distributed in financial assistance to households. And there were also food boxes. We know that food was, is often, food insecurity is a challenge for many families and communities. And so food boxes that had prepared meals for adults were delivered, almost 60,000, as well as hot meals for people were delivered. And that is not just with adult, but also includes children as well. And that concludes my presentation to you all. We really just appreciate being here with you. We appreciate your ongoing support of the Black Child Legacy Campaign. And we just look forward to being in community and in conversation and in action with you all to continue reducing African-American child deaths. Thank you.
Great. Thanks, Shelley. I know Supervisor Serena wanted to weigh in.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, Shelley, for a terrific presentation. And I just wanted to take a moment to, one of the people that I didn't mention earlier, because I knew that we're going to have this complimentary presentation more specific to BCLC. I wanted to publicly thank Chet Hewitt for his years of leadership and very closely connected support of the original R-A-A-C-D effort and now Black Child Legacy Campaign. We all understand that this would be extremely challenging to do without other partnerships, most notably community-based organizations. And that certainly includes Sierra Health Foundation as one of those organizations and the people in it, including yourself, Shelley, that really do a lot of the heavy lifting here in terms of the administration of all the programming and kind of being that one touchstone for so many of the sub-efforts, if you will, to trying to meet our goals and reducing the foreleading causes of death. So a huge shout-out and thanks to Chet Hewitt and all his staff, and certainly to you, Shelley, for your leadership specific to this initiative.
Thank you, Supervisor Serena.
Echo the thanks to Chet and to all the folks that are part of the team here. Okay. And I guess you were the cleanup hitter on this one, is that right?
That's it.
Yeah. You got the cheers a little earlier, so. Anyway. Okay, thanks, Shelley.
Thank you all.
Thanks to all of our presenters. I don't know if we have any callers on the line. We have some folks on hold. So thanks to the folks that were available. And I don't know if anybody wanted to do any sum-up, either Ann or Bruce. Otherwise, just, again, we'll thank all the presenters today.
We do not have any calls on the line.
Okay. Ann?
Well, I just want to thank the whole team as well. As one of the members of the Blue Ribbon Commission when it first started, I am really pleased to see the just amazing work that the Black Child Legacy Campaign has done and the partnerships that they've created. It's really, I just get a little bit of chills just having been there at the very beginning. So I'm really pleased. So thank you, everyone.
Yes. How about applaud folks, right? Yeah. It's okay. It's fine. And that goes out to all the folks who've been a part of the effort throughout the years. It is making a difference, so.
In fact, Ms. Chair, I was just reflecting on, specifically on, you know, as the board may recall, or some members of the board may recall, there was a part of the Blue Ribbon Commission's charge that involved actually going out into the seven neighborhoods where we had heat mapped, where the disparity was most pronounced. And we went out to those communities to hear from people that lived in them that really perhaps didn't understand the nature of, you know, the unfortunate trend of race disparities when it comes to something as important as the livelihood of our young people. And, you know, in some instances, many people were very upset, and understandably so, and very emotional. And I just remember at the time, when Ann was with DHHS, being very committed to doing that. And I remember specifically going, and I think it was Meadow View that we went to one night, and we stayed for, I don't know, probably three or four hours to listen to folks. And it was, it was difficult at times to kind of hear why they're, you know, the reasons behind their feelings when it comes to something as important as making sure that their kids have every opportunity to live as long and have as good a life as anyone else's. But it was very inspiring for me to also see the investment at that point from senior staff. And that has really carried through to today. So to Ann's point, really want to thank her and Bruce and everyone else that's been so instrumental from a staff perspective.
No, you make a good point. I know there's been, it was pre-COVID, but just a few years ago, it seems like quite a while ago, but we had representatives from all the CILs and some of the FRCs that were here and the teams. And we heard from the brokers and from the county staff and from the community members and from some of the young people and families. Again, very moving and, again, just, you know, living proof of, you know, advocacy of certainly the effort here. And I would just note, too, that, because I think Phil alluded to it in his comments earlier, and some of us were here at the time, getting a five-year funding commitment was no small feat. Because, again, we do budgets year to year, but to get that commitment, and that wasn't necessarily, and it wasn't, Ann wasn't the county executive at the time, that wasn't necessarily county executive's recommendation. But Phil was very committed to it, and certainly this board, through our budget deliberations, chose to do that. And it provided, I think, that good point, a foundational point from which to launch, but also knowing that there was going to be certainty within the budgetary context to see the initial efforts through and obviously bring us to where we are today. So, again, kudos, Phil, because I know you were instrumental. That was kind of a hard-fought budget deliberation at the time. But we got there, and here we are today. And again, a lot of good work that's gone on and much more work ahead. But thanks to all the presenters. And if we don't have any other comments, I have board members, and that'll bring us to a close on this item. We'll probably hear more about it during the budget process. But, okay. Very good. Adam Clerk, no calls, right?
Nope.
Okay. Thanks to callers on the line. All right. So this is a receiving file, and again, you know, amongst some of the challenging news, some very good news embedded in the report. So, all right. And that brings us to, that was the final hearing item of the day. And we're now go to county executive comments, so.
And I don't have any further comments, but thank you.
All right. Very good. Thanks. And then to board members for any guests, Supervisor Serena.
I don't have an adjournment today, but I will. I just want to let folks know I want to do an appropriate and thorough adjournment in the very near future for the passing of Esteban Villa, longtime, well-known Chicano artist and activist here in Sacramento, who was very close to me and my family, and I know close to many people in this community. But I want to make sure that I do it right. But that's something that we should expect here shortly.
Yeah. Did note the article over the week and related to both he and Bill Dorman as well, as well, who was a college professor, colleague of your father's, but also I had him as a college instructor for a couple of different classes out at Sac State during the '70s. Okay, any other comments or announcements by board members? If not, then we're going to return to these chambers. Tomorrow at 2:00, we have a 1:00 o'clock closed session, and if there's nothing further, then we will stand in adjournment, and we'll see everybody back tomorrow afternoon.